We're gonna call to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a motion to approve the present agenda as written. Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And we're gonna start out the meeting with a public comment period, first of two public comments. It will be one now and one at the end of the meeting. For this public comment period, an opportunity for stakeholders of the Chatham Central School District to speak about items on today's agenda. Second public comment is an open public comment for any, any items, but right now if someone would like to speak about today's agenda, come sign in at the sheet over at the round table there. And/or if you're online, you can raise your digital hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. So we have visual public, we have two attendees, neither of which have their hand up. Okay. We'll just give it another moment. Okay. And we're gonna move, move on into our pupil personnel services update with Brian Simon and Renee Morgan.
Awesome. Before Brian, while they're getting settled in here, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Brian, Renee, and the entire team. I owe them a really big shout out from opening day that I neglected to highlight what a wonderful job they do here for our students. So thank you and we're looking forward to hearing more about your contributions to the district here and what you do for our students.
Thank you. You know, we have a little bit of continuation, actually big continuation from some of the conversations we had last month. I just want to introduce most of our teams here, the two couldn't make it, Renee Morgan, elementary school counselor. Rachel Trent is one of our school psychologists. She also is with us, and she's a community psychologist, a crime school psychologist, social worker, faith penalty, art school guidance, counseling, there's Lombardi and Amanda, you know, so the two people who couldn't make it today are, Scott here, Jackie Hoffman, and Jackie Hoffman's son is in Bay Sectionals. And I used to be there for Sectional, then Cameron Stewart Donovan is still on maternity leave and preparing to return. And then you'll keep the others, school social workers, housed at the middle school. So today, the goal, like, I'm gonna start off by, like, you know, some of the challenges we're facing. I really see some of the stuff we're doing right now is a microcosm of overseeing other school districts and societies. So I have some data I'm gonna present to you. And then the team is going, so I'm gonna pass it off to them and then we'll let you know how they're expressing some issues of their plans. I do think they do a wonderful job, not that it is always easy. I think sometimes it's a fishing a boulder uphill at times, because challenges keep growing and there's surprise around every corner. But I really think they've come with some wonderful innovative plans to support the kids. And the feedback I've been hearing from families is all they're really wonderful in some of the work that they do. So Sal, you can, sometimes I'm gonna present some data that I'm seeing nationally right now. So COVID's been a big piece on the impact it has on children, but these numbers have been increasing before COVID. COVID and the impact of the pandemic has made things worse, and the data shows that these was an uptick more prior to that. So looking at some of this data, there was an increase between 20, 2007 and 2012, up 20% just in that time period of students with anxiety. Renee did a great job putting together a lot of the data on this. And so the data, I was looking at all the, you know, post-pandemic data, it's still coming out, there's a lot not there, but right now they're looking at, you know, at 20% of students with anxiety disorders at this point in time. When you look at children and adults, I've seen some data and some of the articles that I've read in newspapers talking about diagnosis rates over 30%. Are you looking at with our kids? Are there, if you're one in three kids, you are looking at or dealing with some type of anxiety disorder? We're not talking, I'm stressed today, you know, that's not what it takes to get a, you know, anxiety disorder. We all go through moments, you all have times of stress, you all have to get through things that are challenging in life. But then to be able to deal with it, to get that diagnosis, this is a pervasive issue that impacts each and every day. It's having a pretty substantial impact on your ability to form well in school and both academically and socially and functionally in your presence. So it really is a very big issue.
All the way up obviously to high school students, when your families are impacted, has a huge impact on our students as well. We're seeing a lot of poor, um, traffic.
One of the issues that we have sometimes is finding treatment for kids. We work with outside agencies who are best to collaborate. I know from my direct book of accountants that they have had a hard time filling their children's team. It's been a struggle for them to have all of the staff they need to provide children services. And I don't have a little while since I spoke to them, but there was a point in time I know where they had, uh, social work and social system. And not long ago, it was all fun, right, so there is, and even with that increasing case numbers. My spouse is a social worker in the community and I know that she's always spoken for the waiting list. And that's when a lot of our families, when they're reaching out, have that waiting list. We have a list of outside providers, of the private parents, but they're not always available. People can some, you know, look at some of the data here, the most likely, treatment, depression, depression is the most likely to get treatment services. And we are seeing students at school getting formal diagnoses, young, getting doctor with depression. Didn't start seeing that go up or at high school, or middle school, getting depression. But now we have students at elementary school with depression diagnoses coming in. Pretty regular basis. You know, six in 10 receive treatment of anxiety disorders and only half went behavioral disorders. And most of the behavioral disorders are control, the diagnosis changes, kids. So you have children with behavioral, disrupted, like, you know, school, which are elementary teams, and a lot of time, like, those come to that with, at that point in time, by the time those children get to high school, all of the diagnosis change. Obesitism, defiant disorder, which is dysregulation disorder, they're very popular, we're trying to manage that, you know, and our goal is for the children to be successful and to successful, happy students in school. But we are a school, not a mental health, but we're always trying to manage that and how to support them in an appropriate way. A little bit carryover, so one in six children aged two to eight now have a behavioral disorder. There are young, his, and control, two, three, four year olds. And I see that with our, you know, I was going before about our special education program. Five special education services, children three to 20 months, so we have students in special education programs, whole day special education programs with behavioral. That, you know, work with, on a regular basis, we're seeing social workers support for the behavioral. There wasn't that long ago, they came, went to one of these preschools, were functional behavioral assessment and behavioral. Very recent. Here's where, you know, it gets really scary about the, some of these needs. Second leading course, that fifteen, twenty-four year old, now is suicide. The leading one is accidental death, number one. But I think there's some topics, sometime you'll get some of the other stuff, the decision, why, they could have done that. Kids, probably there's some overlap with those accidental deaths. But our staff here at building, SCL is crucial work for lives of these children that matters greatly for what you do. You know, and actually I was looking at some of the same data before Renee, Renee, I found some of the same data. So I was looking at this before she created this slide and, you know, when you see eighteen percent, one in almost one in five students came up, considered suicide plan. Fifteen percent actually had a plan. They're very scary numbers, you know, we're always coming up with plans of how we're gonna support the children. Renee will mention it in the later slide too, but it's a vast, vast leading about mandated council services. Five of four, and I, it's exactly, if you look at students have that, it's just shy of ten percent of our school has some form of mandated council services. Their IEP, five of four, that's nine point six percent, I'm not, uh, right, it's quite a bit. Total room, nine point six percent have council services, not nine, four, five of four. And there's always, you know, the chicken and the egg thing with some of the IEPs and our students run away emotionally because they also have learning disabilities. Or for them, it's been something every day in the council, or, you know, some of the academic, because of their social. Cycle, that's what we're, sometimes. And this is like a little bit of picture, I hate to, so I started, and some of the struggles that we're doing with. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it off with some of the more positive, I think some of the great work they're doing. But you know, that was all national data except for our mandated services, they also do a lot of mandated, they'll tend to base on that. That's a little bit harder because it's all of that short term, so if I go into crisis, we see six weeks. As that to be, that's, they'll tend to base on that. They are doing a lot of work, a little bit of picture of the kinds of challenges they're facing. In addition to those challenges, they do some like, you know, get a mandate of some of the work that they're doing, you know, I saw them do giving PSAT exams today. They're getting kids ready for their careers at their school and, you know, for their college planning. And, you know, their essays for college and the applications for thoughts, it was all that. In addition, I know I've had to work with my daughter very closely when she was going through that process, you know, it's such, a lot of time spent in that type of work also. So it's quite a bit, really.
So you have a lot of challenges, it takes village, to work with some of these issues, and again, we're, we're a school, right? So we're not in the home, as well. So in the academic setting, we address many of the search department through SCL, social, cultural, learning. Within that framework, you know, we work with the state, federal mandates, council department has come up with the school counseling, upper heads of school counseling, plan, it's a holistic plan, it takes developmental approach. A component of that of active, supportive SCL. And this will vary from building to building with a different professional responsibility. So as you can see, although I can see SCL being the center of that, we're all being a part of that. And the next slide, it's a little breakdown, will we support mental health? Will we all support mental health? They will, all the building, all the staff members, I broke down, counseling, we have in each building. But everyone plays a role in the learning process, whether it's aggressive court behavior through assorted practices, a teacher helping a student, parental help getting through a difficult time, or not giving up on long-term goals, staff modeling social behaviors, community service opportunities, and then there's the explicit SCL lesson.
That every kid, someone they can go to, trust, well, well, if it's here, it's not a pool. So a lot of kids, there's school nurse, they go to school nurses for that, right, but it's crucial that every child in the building has someone they feel they can connect with, who they can go to. Sometimes our SCL team will help guide, of course, have those conversations with kids. Be like things and will connect that up, it might be a mentor, you know, possibly the P teacher is a mentor.
So everybody, sometimes, you know, years past, we've had kids help the study and they can help them. So everybody does play a role. If we move on to the next one, you know, I just kind of outlined, kind of outlined some of the terminology and practices that we put in place. I don't wanna read them all, but you can see some of those, you know, some of the things that we can do over the years, being important, like empathy, compassion, endurance. When I think of these terminology, the practices, I really think mostly in terms of our coping skills, and social skills, and primarily in terms of the importance of resilience and the ability to bounce back from adversity, overcome challenges, thrive in the age of today. So these are the terms that we're using, that we're teaching, that we're thinking, and we're hoping to use. School life, preschool, all the way up. But when you're looking primarily at the counseling approach, we really think about it as a tier intervention. So we do the three tiers, obviously tier one is prevention, where we're promoting proactive mental health practices for all students. So tier one are the activities such as classroom lessons, clubs, assemblies, participation, school counseling programs. All those things that all students have access to. And then we'll, then follow us up, we're holding, um, this is a question. Tier two is for the more intermediate type interventions. These might be students who are having short-term children, it might be small groups or individual counseling consultation, behavioral intervention, risk assessment. Also, you put that, you have the money, I think they're for a pretty long time, I do a lot more risk assessment. And of course, the three, tier three is our intensive intervention, then we're also seeing more of those that are more chronic, severe for behavioral problem. And health issues, with the, this is what the mandate comes, the FDA's come in, out of school placement, those wraparound community services. More risk assessments, emergency procedures, hospitalization, things like that. So.
Yes.
So in MED, as Brian mentioned previously, we're really looking at those maladaptive behaviors, that's how children present with poor kids. It might be a physical or emotional outburst, refusal to do schoolwork, or to come into the building. It may look like a child wishing appear, or climbing under a table, or refusing, separating from a parent, gripping up schoolwork. We are less likely to diagnose children with a mental health disorder, and consider many of these behaviors as falling within the range, the normal range of development and school adjustment. But I'm gonna have Rachel kind of highlight some of the things that we're doing, obviously unlisted, some of the things that we are doing that I'm very proud of, some of the things we can keep in mind.
Yeah, so like Renee had mentioned, the first couple are gonna be consistent among MED, the middle school and high school. But for, it's really scary, the numbers, like we were saying earlier, risk assessments, Renee and I had done together. And also went to evolve for TUS. We've done them on students as young as eight, like second grade, first grade, and it's really scary that we're doing them on students that young. But additionally, at the elementary school, that's a little bit different from the middle school and the high school. What we're doing, we're starting classroom meetings, which are gonna focus on different ways to incorporate social, emotional learning and student wellness into the classrooms in a variety of ways. We're doing wellness activities at different clubs. Just some examples, I started pushing into first grade classrooms and fourth grade classrooms weekly to do yoga and mindfulness techniques. And I also did a yoga flex club for third graders last year. And that also, like I said, was for yoga and mindfulness techniques. So that addresses the tier one level that we were talking about, to really give all those students a chance to learn those coping skills and get a chance to address their wellness at a more general level. Another thing that we're doing at the elementary school is our house colors. So that gives all of the students and faculty a chance to really build community within MED socially and gives those students really a chance to build peer relationships and find those peer mentors, teacher mentors that we're talking about. And it really helps them to build trust with others in the community. We also have the bright room, which is the Panther Den that Renee Morgan works in. And that allows kids that are going through crises to calm down, calm down in there. It gives them a chance to just kind of go and talk, whether or not they're in a crisis, Renee Morgan might be able to talk a little bit more about it, so.
The one thing, we have too much of our time, we have other colleagues as well, but it is, you know, it's actually, our program started in our building, and I hope it's starting working in our school. And it was very timely, we actually started our program before COVID hit. Remember our other crisis that we've been dealing with, drug epidemic, that's, so the bright room is really meant as a space for the safety space for students who just are not ready to be in the classroom, they're very, uh, social, emotional, able, we'd like them to come to school and kind of give them the wraparound certain things. So they can slowly build their way back into the classroom, full time. And this is for all students, so if you can get a, if they get counseling, they can, they can. Well, everybody, it's a pleasure to be here on the Friday, to be the panel, to be the panel to talk about some familiar faces, you know. And just kind of review some of the things that Rachel stated are quite similar as a middle school. You have a mandate, state-wide mandate, our counselor does meet with every single student, and that's really about, exactly, to teach generally, how are you feeling, you know, if there's any way you'd like to chat. Uh, you know, and that's kind of outside of our, our regular, you know, IEP, private board mandate. Of course, we do have our IEP, our five of four mandated councils, where either high school or school social worker will meet those students. Sometimes that's weekly, sometimes that's five weeks, sometimes it's monthly, really depends on that child's individual needs. That's something that we collaborate with, with their teachers, with their parents, with students, depending on their age, from residential, permanent service. Our mandate, amped to the D P, sexual abuse prevention, a lot of that kind of also goes in with like character education and that's something that we provide. That's really for a few topics at the middle school. Honesty, that the resiliency and then working with students and pushing into classrooms too, where we get teacher involved in conversations so that students know that they can go to their teachers to have a, um, help conversation, guys, they might not come, come down, but hopefully they come, uh, help conversation with their students. Definitely, or doing a, quite a bit of parenting or counselor community outreach there, you know, I can see for, you know, personally, kind of like, you know, reach out to, you know, be a county, because that's what we serve. Times, we have a core program, and we're trying to kind of build connections with parents and students, and the identity issues. Connections with our, uh, colleagues, oh, uh, definitely agencies, we're trying to build those connections with students, of course, quite a few were pumped up. It's actually coming up, I thought, it was, I thought it was October, it's November, I'm, yeah.
So, thanks so much, yeah, really excited to do that and partake. We provide, you know, we do our suicide, homicide risk assessments, usually partaking with multiple counselors present. In crisis intervention, I did just complete a functional behavioral assessment and behavioral intervention plan at a preschool. So that is a support that we provide for students, typically at the tier three level where they're really requiring pretty intense intervention and, and support. And that's something that we provide. We do have a, our child study team and team meetings, and that's, you know, really meeting up. And it's not necessarily a pathway to sped services, a lot of times it's what can we provide to see if, if the child doesn't need sped services? Maybe, maybe they don't need these services, they just require some additional support. And that's something that we can come up with an academic and or behavioral intervention and provide the teacher's support of how to implement that. And, uh, and, and sometimes we've done that in ways that students end up not needing special education services. Sometimes they'll get referred, of course, but a lot of times I think we're able to, to go a different route and avenue, and that's been quite beneficial in our schools. Um, we do have a bright room that's, that's been now taken from the MED to the middle school level, and that's something that we've begun implementation for. And that's some of our more, uh, really tier three students, and those are, again, students that, you know, have pretty chronic absenteeism, for example, who are being re-entered into the school for hospitalization. So we do have a few students that may enter that room at some point in their career. With our circles, and that kind of goes along with our character education. We have our mentoring program, and I think some folks here might be familiar, familiar with that, and that's a pretty great program that we have, pretty longstanding with the community, with members performing outreach to, to our school and building really great connections with our students, and that's been pretty remarkable to see. And we have our NCPI that kind of go along with character education, our peer buddy program, so that's usually carrying an older student with a younger student and kind of developing that connection amongst peers. And then I think one of the big ones is transition, transition services that I want to highlight is we always meet up at the end of the school year. Middle school team will meet with the high school team and the elementary team, to kind of bridge, you know, that gap of, these are our students that really can't fall through the cracks. These are our students that need to be seen, you know, what should we know about this student? Can you help us really understand the student that way before they enter the door? We're ready to take it out and assist with that. So I think it's been quite comprehensive at the middle school level, and I don't know if folks have questions yet, but if you do, you're more than welcome to ask or wait till the end, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I, I got one quick question. But maybe, and maybe also for the MED, just like a quick question, I'm curious how we're staffing the bright rooms? Because I know that there was some pressure the last couple of years, I believe we.
And I know, you know, I've had concerns about, like, some of my students about accessing that curriculum of, of just, um, a general consent measures and then just also, I think, as again, at like high school, and I'll let them talk about that, of what that looks like there. But those are conversations that are happening at the middle school as well.
You have those, like, tier one, but everyone gets there first, right? Some kids are getting, have the speech center come in, interesting that, have, as like a higher level of services also.
You mentioned the circles in relationship to the sexual or sexual abuse education. Do we do circles in other, for other social, emotional beings? That's the first question. The second question is, who manages those circles? Are they all done by counselors, or do we push into classrooms with restorative circles, or?
That's a great question. So our counselor, Jackie Hoffman, what she'll do for circles is she'll push in typically to like homeroom classrooms. A lot of times the teachers will actually participate as well, but it is led and directed by that school counselor. And really a, a big part of what circles looks like is, you know, Jackie definitely facilitates that, but it's also about having the students facilitate that. They're really the ones that are leading those conversations and just having a counselor there to guide and support, a kind of, you know, taking a step back and letting them have conversations about not just sexual abuse prevention, but bullying, empathy, resiliency, honesty. And, you know, we just had Sweethearts Heroes come in and did wonderful lessons with our middle school student circle, but I was actually able to participate in. So I was able to actually see how they're facilitated. And they were conversations about, about bullying and empathy and treating others the way you wanna treat, and we're humans and we have human rights. And we're humans and we have human rights and dignity and um, and listening to others. And I felt like that really went a long way with the students of, we're not gonna, we're not gonna speak over one another. We're really gonna listen and we're not gonna call you out ruthfully if you talk over somebody. Um, but we're gonna notice that and we're gonna feel that. And I felt like, um, I was very surprised that sixth graders really were kind of, um, a lot of them were in tears. It really hit a lot of them about having those human conversations and I felt like they responded well. They were followed up with by counselors afterwards. Um, but I felt like that was a very, uh, very neat thing to experience.
I, so I, I think, I think you do a good job. Um, that being said, two thousand eight or nine, you brought it into the eye. A lot of training around NCBI. I mean, I knew that year we found the character education school of the year. Some of what you're talking about sounds, especially the kids who started into the circles, sounds very much like what we're doing with the NCBI. Is that drying in the line or is that part of this whole? Like, how does that, how does that original structure of character building fit into the structure of social emotional and everything?
NCBI actually still comes to our school. So that's actually a program that's uh, very much running in our middle school. That's another program that we brought. Um, I apologize if I didn't mention that. NCBI is a, is a program where we have educators come in and they're actually training our eighth graders to be outstanding role models to go into the sixth grade um, classrooms. And they're presenting and they're leading. And a lot of times we're just kind of taking a backseat, letting them go for it. And those are also including the topics that we just discussed, bullying, empathy, stereotypes, um, creating a hostile environment. So they're not necessarily always getting that, you know, from us, but they're getting it from their peers. And I, and I think that that's really helpful where you have eighth graders, they might not listen to us, but they're much more likely to listen to their eighth graders because they look up to them. So that is actually a program that we have running. That's a great question. Thank you.
I, I have a question about that. Is that a voluntary program or is it, you know, it is?
Yep. So um, for our eighth graders, what it typically is, uh, students are, um, are recommended. Um, but those students are also volunteering to be involved. So they're students that are really excited to be part, to take in that.
So what is that participation rate roughly?
Pardon, pardon me?
The participation rate in that, like, what we talk?
The participation rate, I wanna, trying to think about approximately how many students? I would say that there were, was at least, at least twenty. There was enough for several groups to facilitate. And in each group, there was about three or four students participating. So I would say, I want to say there was like four or five groups of students last year. Um, and it was great because they took a, they took, I think, two full days, I believe. And they participated in these trainings and then they went into the classrooms with, with their group member and uh, presented in the, in the sixth grade classrooms.
I had one other question about the wellness check. When is it done? And um, you know, what's, how is it administered? Like, what is it? What, what is the?
So uh, I know that the wellness check is done actually in different periods of the year, depending on the age for the student. So I know that Jackie Hoffman, what she'll do is like one month will be like November and she will spend that whole month going through a group of students. Um, I believe, you know, a couple of months down the road, she'll hit another grade group of students. And what that wellness check really is encompassing is, um, you know, looking at academics, looking at how they've been doing up to that point. Looking at, you know, I think if they've had any behavioral concerns, have they had any referrals? But also generally, how are you feeling in school? Are you feeling connected to school? Do you have a trusted adult in school? Are you involved in any extracurriculars? Um, we know here that, um, you know, suicidality, for example, is, is linked to, you know, not having somebody to confide in. We know that it's when students do not have a single trusted adult in school and they don't participate in activities, when they feel hopeless. Um, and those are all things that we kind of touch upon in those wellness checks of do you have an adult that you get along with? Do you participate in something fun outside of school? Do you enjoy school? Cause school connection is a huge protective factor about uh, pretty much anything, dropout rate, suicidality, later drug use, sexual abuse, sexual promiscuity. All of that is linked to school access.
Some kids are, well, can't look through those checks. Other times, you know, it's tough and for them to pay with it or I, you know, or on those counseling. Or when there's parent follow-up conversations, community outreach. Sometimes if a student already has an IEP, could turn it into a student mandated counseling. That law, like we have hold of CFP, even from students.
And you said that's in November, is that right?
Um, for Jackie, really ranges depending on the age group. There's one group of students that I believe she had said that she'll do within like November. She'll do an age group, uh, range of students. One, I believe is like in January and I think one is in March. So she spreads them out, um, so that she's also able to see her, her non-mandated students that she's on with.
It's like a schedule check. And sometimes the teacher might see the child struggling, shout, you guys, the department. Say, hey, let's face this child up in the morning, something to.
Oh yeah, it's good way to find those quiet kids that you don't know that are, things are going on, you know, that have a chance to come and speak up in a one-on-one situation. At the elementary building, we have more of your captive audience, right? So we have a classroom teacher. It's more of a family type situation. Um, and so they run the SCL program in their classroom. They do do morning meetings. We're gonna be starting, um, at a morning meeting twice a month where I like to, we start putting in, copy some common language and um, some of the things we want to talk about with students, um, that we're all gonna be part of. Um, we also started a WIP program, um, right around the time we started the STEM program. That's just, it's like, it's like child study, but just, it's a wellness intervention team. So if a teacher, um, if a parent comes to you, if a counselor, um, has a student that they're concerned about, just, just for their mental health issues, we'll have a team together and we don't let, one of our ways to help that kids don't get lost.
Kids are having, um, they go in and they push us with questions on, you know, so, so we can all, it's a, it's a real team approach on, you know, what's being done and what are we all seeing and what are, what are the different perspectives? So they do a really good job of kind of a team approach.
I just have a question about the, um, the record keeping with this. At what point does it get onto a student's medical record? So I mean, if you're doing an intervention, they're having trouble. What, what happens with those records? Do they just go away? Or is it on this permanent medical, you know, assessment that they're carrying around for the rest of their lives? So at what point does that trigger something that they're gonna have to deal with when they go to maybe get a pistol permit or, or so? So what happens?
So the only time you really have to be concerned about those types of things. And I know sometimes it even impacts you going to get into the military, if it's on your IEP and you're diagnosed with a, um, I mean, trying to.
And then they lightened up on this. There was once upon a time, there's a student who had a classification on their IEP of emotional disability, uh, would not be able to get into the military or possible law enforcement. I've known students who had that classification who were able to get in now. So that's been, for whatever reasons, I'm not sure, they've lightened up on that. Sometimes students get diagnoses of things and we don't know about them. It's up to the parent often to tell us. So on School Tool, if there is a record, there's a little medical tab. They might count that a student has an ADHD diagnosis, like they are, you know, type one diabetic or, you know, they have other issues too. It'll be, that could be included in there so this, they're aware, but it's just part of the school record. And like, or when the parents want us to know, there is no carryover afterwards. It's not something that's shared, but you know, that would impact the child's ability to get into colleges or career choices down the line.
Because they are streamlining a lot of this and they're taking in a lot of information. It's going in this, you know, database. So I just wondered at what point does it trigger something that will end up?
I think the only thing I can think of, and I don't know this factually, is really if a student is involved in, you know, probation in some way. They, you know, there's a crime committed, you know, down the line. Yes. Yeah, where it's not our role to make those diagnoses, you know, we.
Brian, I, I think, you know, there are situations where we have mandated reporting responsibilities. But, but that's, we're just tapping an outside agency on the shoulder and then they're going through their process. So. Uh, we took a left turn before we got to high school.
Right, we haven't done high school yet.
Hi, everyone. Not to worry, we're not reiterating everything that's already been said. Um, but we do think it's important to note a few things about some of the common bullets that we have between all of the buildings. So within our guidance department, our roles differ between school counselors, social workers and psychologists. But the thing that we think really works to benefit students and families is our team approach. Whether it's us at the high school working together, all of us within our department working together. We feel like we've been together for a long time. We know kind of each other's strengths. And we rely on each other to, to work in a way that will best benefit students. Um, also consistent communication with counseling staff, teachers, administrators and of course, students and families is so key to the social wellbeing and emotional wellbeing of our students as well as their academic success. So we also believe that that's one of our strengths too. Because not only are we communicating with each other and within our department, um, and within our schools, but reaching out to families, we recognize that as such a critical component to students' success. The first bullet point, which Caitlin talked a little about, uh, about the counselor mandate. That one's on the high school and the middle school slides. This references the requirement that school counselors meet with every student individually once per year. And during those meetings, in addition to the wellness check, it's a plan for academic and career, right? So, you know, like Brian had said before, our roles are beyond the social emotional wellbeing. But isn't that a big part of what makes everything else work? If a student's not feeling well, they're not doing well in school. Um, so while we do, of course, fulfill that mandate, we meet with every student individually. Um, we also very consistently work with students through the tier one programming, which Renee uh, referenced earlier. And really for a significant portion of the pop, uh, population, more regular one-to-one counseling or group counseling is really necessary. So that brings them the tier two, tier threes that Renee had spoken about. So Tracy can speak more about that.
So as Amanda has said, the high, at the high school, we use a team approach. Amanda, Jim and myself, we've worked together for almost twenty years. So we trust each other. We work as a team. It's just, if you ever go over there, you'll know, like, we're constantly bopping around from one office to the other. Um, so we won't go over the whole entire list again, but there are a few things we wanted to highlight. Um, first of all, our child study team, we meet once a week and it consists of the guidance team, our administrators, the nurse, a special education teacher and a regular education teacher. And students are brought to our attention through like various avenues such as grades, discipline, attendance, parent referrals, teacher referrals, et cetera. And at our meetings, we discuss students that we have concerns about and try to problem solve. We also do reentry meetings after mental health hospitalizations. So since these can last a week or more, we use a team approach to meet with the student and their family before they return to school. At this time, we address social and emotional concerns. We identify supports, supports within the school um, and come up with an academic plan to get the student back on track and reintegrate them into the school setting. At the high school, we also do various character education initiatives. Um, we, each student, um, for all grades, we do social media safety presentations. And these include developmentally appropriate lessons, lessons, um, about healthy relationships, social skills, keeping a clean digital footprint and online safety. Uh, we also do classroom presentation at the request of teachers if they identify a need. So for example, last year Karen Sousa and I went in and we talked to all the senior English classes about anxiety and coping skills when they were experiencing a little stress and nervousness around the capstone project. We also do assemblies. We had Sweethearts and Heroes in. We had the Save a Life Tour. And at the end of September as well, that one focused on distracted driving as well as drinking and driving. It was pretty cool. We brought in simulators and each kid got to use the simulators a couple of times and experience what it's like to try to send a text and drive or be under the influence. Another thing we do at the high school is the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Team. And this is where a group of peer educators teach their classmates warning signs, risk factors, the importance of asking for help when someone is feeling suicidal. Like Caitlin said, the biggest thing is that they don't know how to ask for help. So the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Team teaches them that it's okay to ask for help and how to ask for help. So this is taught in the phys ed classes where the teachers are kind enough to give up two full days. So every kid can participate in Yellow Ribbon. Um, and so for the psychologists and I, Karen, or Lindsay, who's actually taking over for Karen right now, the biggest part of our time is consumed by individual group and crisis counseling. That's basically our entire day. So between the two of us, we see about a third of the high school population. And as Brian and Renee have referenced, this need is just increasing and over the years. So.
So this is our, the next slide, this is our current students receiving mandated counseling. Um, and that's just where it is at this moment. As Brian said, it's close to ten percent. Uh, generally it's early in the year. This will generally increase as the year goes on. Um, uh, but that's about typical for what you'll see this time of, in the fall of the school year, the last few years. The next one, um, on our last slide is the mandated counseling. This is our highest, oops, no, I'm sorry, the non-mandated counseling. This is our highest served population. The numbers will fluctuate from year to year, uh, month to month. Uh, students, uh, will be, who are reporting or exhibiting symptoms of anxiety are also again on the increase. It's the most common complaint that we've been hearing lately. Parent conferences, along with individual parent teacher, uh, concerns generate the majority of the counseling referrals at MED. Students will self-refer about ten to fifteen percent of the time. A lot of times, friendship issues. Um, but the percentage of students self-referring also increases with age. And the good news is, um, the stigma attached to counseling or having mental health concerns are decreasing. And so there is a positive trend that, this is a positive trend that's enabling students to seek help sooner. And so I think people, kids are not ashamed to say, listen, I have anxiety. I have anger issues. I gotta come in and see Mrs. Morgan. You know, they're not ashamed to say it. They're not ashamed to say it in front of their peers. And so they're more likely to seek help and get help for it. So our ultimate goal is to provide students with the social and emotional tools needed to be well-adjusted adults with the skills and resources to pursue their dreams and become protective, protective members of society.
So, um, I have a question that, uh, we may be out of date here. This goes back to pre-COVID era. When I believe we acquired a software package with the idea being that we would be able to track interventions for better handoff between grades and between buildings. And then COVID happened. And I'm not sure if we ever did an implementation, but I remember we discussed that capability at one point. And I'm curious, um, I, it, it sounded like a big project at the time and I'm, we haven't talked about it since.
I think he's referring to Mr. Elmer, um, the RTI, um, intervention package that, indeed, that's exactly what happened. COVID came along and we have not had an opportunity to revisit that yet.
Okay.
And I know one of the things we've talked as a team that we really want to work more on is, um, how we're tracking our risk assessments from building to building and having one location. So, you know, at the elementary level, you might have a little kid draw a picture on the paper and you don't know what to do with it. If you have a spot to keep it to see, is there a trend? You know, it may be was a nothing, didn't think much, but gee, it happened again with this teacher and it happened again next year. And now the pictures are becoming more elaborate. Maybe this is something more, more significant that we've got to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be solved with software, but it, it's, I remember at the time that it was identified as an area for improvement. So.
I know Karen Sasso was talking much about her Google form that she's. Jump in, jump in.
Um, uh, so one of the, the conversations that I know that I've, I've had and I know really, I think the majority of us have had at this point with Dr. Lisa Root is really discussing child study and child study. is really discussing child study, and child study really is looking at all interventions. What are we doing Tier One, but also what are we doing Tier Two and Tier Three? And the whole point of that is really going through a systematic approach where we're doing a thorough referral. We're looking at outside information as well as inside information, developing those interventions with our teams, including SED, regular education, outside providers, internal PTOT, speech, anyone that might be able to have some information about that child. And then, we're actually putting that in cohort folders, cohort data folders. And that's something that we were working on to try to do consistently. That way, when the child moves up, we have everything that was done intervention-wise at the elementary level, to the middle school level, to the high school level. So, that's really a system that I've kind of taken off with, you know, at least I can say for this year at the middle school, something of pretty consistently documenting that, putting that in the Google data drive for CHADOM, and then having that process, you know, streamlined through each of the three schools, that way you have consistency.
So, I have a question about the tiers. Forgive me for my lack of technicality here, but my takeaway, it sounds like Tier Two, there's some concern about the growth within Tier Two, or in terms of number of Tier Two?
Yeah, so, within the tiered systems, you have your Tier One, which is every single student should be receiving, like, Tier One services. That really is your prevention. That's every single student is receiving that. And then approximately, you'll have, like, 10 to 15% of your student body will be receiving some kind of Tier Two intervention, whether or not that's academic or behavioral. That might be a group counseling intervention. It might be a bi-weekly group counseling intervention. When we're talking about Tier Three, we're really talking about approximately 5% of our student body that is receiving academic or behavioral support. That is our most intensive support. So, that's when we're talking individual counseling, maybe weekly.
So, that's Tier Two section. It sounds like that's growing, and that's, I heard as a concern, that that's growing unusually.
No, we have time for a student, but what we're finding is our Tier Three do take up a lot of our time and our resources. And that the intensity of some of these behavioral concerns are bigger than they have been in the past. And when maybe it would be one or two, you might have a grade level, we're seeing a bigger percentage of those kids who are really functioning at the Tier Three level, who's issued, you know, your normal counseling kind of interventions just aren't working, that their needs are bigger than what we're able to provide on your typical services. And unfortunately, sometimes it needs out of school.
Because that's a big piece, because, you know, using common language and ways to support kids in that Tier One, so that's a big piece. The overall teacher attendance is probably a better question for Dr. Giangio at a later date. These guys probably aren't the best for that group. So, I think it's a yes and no answer for you there, Fred. You know, the teacher's primary concerns are the education of the students. So, we do train them in that. We encourage their participation. We do a variety of trainings on our Monday meetings, PD days. We are now starting the book club with the four different books that teachers have been invited to. You know, I'm participating in the Limitless Mind one, but the 13 Pillows is one. So, there's a lot of that work that's taking place through those type of things and different PD times for that. But it's not all day, every day. And the last time I spoke to you, I also spoke to you about some of the literacy initiatives we're doing. So, there's always that balance of how much to do. That's why often they will use the group of people here you have tonight as those experts. Because sometimes it goes beyond, when your focus is, I gotta get these kids to learn, you know, adding division, you know, adding a division and adding fractions. Sometimes there's a time to say, excuse me, Renee, I need your help with this student. So, it's knowing when to pass it off is some of the training also.
Well, I could speak a little bit as far as the community agencies. They are maxed. They have very, very little, they have much less capacity to assist us with some of our situations because they are completely inundated. I'm sure you expected that answer, and unfortunately, that's the reality of the situation. Do we reach out still? Do we still try to reach out and talk with our neighboring districts and our guidance counselors? You know, they have, you know, monthly meetings, and they touch base with, you know, what are the best practices? What are we doing? How can we share services? How can we share ideas? But if you're talking about, like, just the outside agency piece, it's a real struggle.
At my Questar meetings, I have them monthly where I meet with the other CFC chaired people in the Questar team. You know, we are discussing that as a regional piece too. And Questar has looked at ideas such as regional psychiatrists. It's so hard to have a psychiatrist hired by Questar. That's an idea that has been put out by them because there's such a need in that area. So, these conversations are happening. But it is to find the people to do it, and the need. It is, as I said, like, a struggle.
See, a developmental psychologist. Everybody I've called that takes my insurance aren't taking somebody. The people, that person I did tell my child to wasn't really focused. Had too many other people. My child prefers getting counseling at school because, A, that's where the person is, and B, that's who the person knows my child and that person that is attentive and has time for them. So, not only are they hard to get services, I'm also hearing more complaints from parents about the type of services that they are getting. And there's very high turnover with outside counseling staff. And so, our kids are in waiting periods for counseling and families, I mean, not... And when it comes to teachers, I mean, our teachers are a part of the whole same community. So, everybody is stressed out, and everybody's at their tipping point. And I know, I'm sure, there's times where colleagues have come and asked for some time. And then, of course, that makes you more likely to get sick and more likely to have time off. And I think we're seeing that globally, you know, and it is, it is hard.
I said lots of really good stuff before I turned this mic on. I just want the public to know. Ask good questions, the whole thing. All right, so, for us, is there something from a policy level that you need for us to deliver or consider?
Yeah, no, we definitely, yeah. I think all of our, like, heads are spinning. Oh, yeah, probably.
Okay, so...
You're hearing from all the voices. Good, good, good. Like, seriously, like, this is why we're here.
I just have one more question. I don't know if it's the right question, but it's just on my mind. And I'm wondering, is the uptick in, I'll just use, you know, the term anxiety of our students across all grade levels, collectively, do you guys think that a significant part of that has contributed to, you know, the change in education during COVID? And how they, you know, weren't able to, you know, experience school in the same way that they did? And, you know, that loss of, like I said, loss of learning. Do you think that a big component of their anxiety now is attributed to that? And if so, is there something we can do? I mean, I think that's part of the question I had. Is there something we can do?
So, a lot of my research is on this stuff, and there's not a definitive answer. And to ask it to a group of professionals, they'd be doing nothing against it. And right now, they're doing such good work, they hate to ask.
It's just not there yet, yeah.
I think, Chris, my family comes from mental health services in the last couple decades. This is, first of all, the mental health field in general is getting better at what it does, and it's more accepted in society. But it's not just that, you know, we're not just providing more services. There are some sociological trends here that are decades long, that, you know, this isn't just COVID that we're looking at here. I think, I have actually a question for the board. So, we're probably not going to be talking about the tiered interventions and SEL in this depth for another year. So, was this a good level of content? Are there topics, related topics you'd like covered next time that we didn't cover this time? Are there other things that we want to get from people's services that are related over the next year?
I'd like to hear, I'd like you guys to have a real good conversation about policy and the implications behind that, and to see if there are things that we need to consider or to figure out about.
Okay, well, we can have Policy Committee reach out for feedback, right? Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate your time.
So, feel free to stick around and talk about construction and, like, fixing roofs, tiles and stuff. But otherwise, enjoy your evening. So, we're gonna move on into the capital project report with SEI and the Facilities Committee. Chris, do you want to have a preamble?
Gentlemen, please join us.
So, I'm just excited.
Is it possible to get them a second microphone?
Just as an introduction, I'm excited to have the team from SEI join us tonight. We have Matt Monahan and Will Calhoun from SEI, and they will be running us through the current state of our upcoming proposed capital project. And this is a compilation of, you know, maybe I would say a year of discussion based on, you know, initially started off looking through our building condition survey report that SEI prepared. And obviously, it has evolved from that point to where we are. And we're excited to be able to have the opportunity to present to the board in its current state. This by no means is a end-all-be-all. We wanted to have this dialogue with the board to explain to the board where we are at the committee level. And we hope to have a dialogue about, you know, what we've put forward in front of you. And then, we can take back the feedback that we hear tonight back to the committee and continue to work. And with that, I'll hand it over to SEI.
Thanks, Chris. So, we put together... So, we put together a pretty lengthy presentation here to try to sum up what our committee has been doing for the last several months. And so, basically, what we're trying to do here is just give you a general overview of the scope of work for each of the buildings that we've been discussing. And once we get through that scope, which will, you know, we'll delve into each of the buildings individually as we go here. So, we'll start with the high school, and then move into other schools from there, and even talk about the bus garage. Once we get through that, we'll talk about the overall budget that that scope entails. And then, from there, Mike Chuddy also put together a presentation on, that kind of furthers that discussion on the budget. And then, we'll get into some of the nuances of the schedule.
And just to kind of preface this a little bit, we've looked at a lot of work based on the building condition survey. And more work than you could probably undertake realistically at any one time. So, you will see that we have some scope right now that's been designated as eighth project. So you will see that we have some scope right now that's been designated as eighth project. And then we have some scope that's listed as alternate. And the reason that we do that is because we're, we're in a, we're sort of in an escalating cost environment right now for projects. So we build a very prudent budget with contingencies built in. And hopefully we get to a point where costs either level off or maybe even come down a bit. We've seen this before. So we build in alternate work that's over and above the base scope. We're going to go over now that, you know, by the time this project bids, you know, we, we hope that we can actually buy more than, than we're showing as a base scope. So that's just a little bit to preface what we're doing.
So just like Matt just said, that's what this is touching on. So we're starting here with the high school scope. And what you see on the left is scope that we've decided that we want to have in the project as base scope work for this building. And then the three items on the right-hand side would be alternate scope. So those are items that we, we build into the project and hope that they could be included if the, you know, the, the financial environment gets better or if things, when we get to that bid period would be favorable, we're be able to capture that additional work. So not to, I don't want to read all these items, but basically what we're trying to capture with the high school is some instructional scope. So we want to touch on renovating science rooms, art rooms, technologies, technology rooms. We also in, included, the high school scope is not just instructional space, but also that sort of necessary maintenance type scope, like replacing the roof on the building. And then on top of that, we've also included some aesthetic upgrades to the building. So we've, we've included some entrance enhancements to the building to give it more of a contemporary welcoming entrance to the building, make people want to come to the building more. And then update the lobby to the building as well. So make that a much more modern welcoming space to come into. Because one of the things that we discussed is that, you know, it's a 19, the building was built in 1972 and really hasn't been upgraded really since then. It's pretty much stayed in its current state since that time. So, you know, I didn't touch on all of them, but there's, there's several, several scope items there, so.
We didn't discuss the seating room, did we?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
So that's actually one of the alternate items. So this is a floor plan of the building. And what we're trying to do here is just give you a snapshot of the, I guess, the breadth of the scope for this building. So the blue areas being the renovation work that we want to have in the scope as well as the yellow areas. But the difference in the yellow spaces is the fact that we'd be reorganizing some space. So those would be renovated, but also moved around. So one of the ideas that came up when we had, we met with some of the facility folks here in the building was we initially identified some scope where we were going to renovate, say, six science rooms in that, that top bar of the floor plan. And when we sat down with folks, it was realized that it really made more sense to move a couple of the art rooms over so that we could take a computer lab for the technology room, which is that other yellow space on the bottom where Sal is pointing to right now. Right now, technology uses that as their, their computer lab. Then technology, their wood shop and metal shop is in the top left corner of the building. It made sense to put those two pieces of program together. So the idea was to take that computer space, move it up next to technology, renovate that little chunk and move the art rooms over, possibly renovate those art rooms. Also, then the remaining four spaces toward that top corner of the building would be all renovated science labs. The center portion of the building is a tricky little part of the building. It's got temporary partitions that were just designed in as part of the original building. And those, I guess they were meant to be moved, you know, as, you know, to make more flexible space, but they've never functioned as that.
So they're harder to move than a block wall, frankly.
So the idea would be to replace all those with real partitions that are also help with blocking sound transfer from one space to the next. Because that's one of the issues with those spaces. It's just that there's, you know, the acoustics from one space to the others. You know, one teacher can hear the other teacher teaching in that class and it becomes a bit difficult. The other blue area being the lobby that we'd be renovating. And then the orange area is being the alternate scope. So auditorium, we're talking about replacing seating and flooring in that space. The library that we're in right now, that's another alternate scope item where we possibly do some renovations out here behind this wall, behind this, toward the courtyard space. And then also the red area, the gym being replacement of gym floor that's past its life. And then another big scope item, the band and chorus room spaces, giving those a full renovation. So we wanted to just give you just a general snapshot or just what the building, we know what the building looks like overall right now. But just give you a general sense of, of what these spaces or parts of the building look like that we're talking about. So the roof is in need of replacement. That's past its warranty. So there's some issues with flashings on the roof, just age of the roof as well. The exterior of the building, there's like a stucco band that runs around the whole exterior of the building at the top edge. It's been patch repaired several times over its life. So we've talked about doing replacement of that. There's some masonry issues on the buildings, missing bricks, mortar being needing to be repointed. And then the bottom two pictures are the main entrance to the building. The entrance doors themselves are in good shape, but you know, just the aesthetics of that outside the building, very plain. And then when you come into that space, like I said before, it's 1972. Some other spaces, try to give you a snapshot of what these look like. So the tech room, the upper labs. The center pictures, the tech computer lab. We've also got pictures on the right-hand side of the band and chorus rooms. And then also some shots of the science rooms. One of the items I didn't touch on when I was looking at the overall plan was the toilet rooms. So you've got gang toilet rooms in the building that are in need of renovation. They're, they're old, they're not 88 compliant. And the toilet partitions in the rooms aren't very private either. So there's two gang toilet rooms we'd be renovating. And then another set of single-use toilets over by the gymnasium. So one of the big components here is technology. So we sat with the technology teacher and went over, you know, some things that would be ideal for them to have for their space. So you're seeing here just a, a sort of a snapshot of the floor plan of, of what those two spaces would be. So the big thing would be to take their computer room, move it adjacent to the tech, to the tech room. Put a, like a glass partition between, make sure, so that those two rooms, there's a door between, there's communication between rooms. To teach in one space, see the other space right through that glass wall. And just upgrade the space in general. So new finishes, new furniture, better storage, better arrangement of just seating for the computer lab itself. Being able to have everybody see or be focused toward a teaching wall. Have that teacher be able to stand there, everybody can see what's going on and have just a better overall learning experience.
So some of the uses that have changed since that space was designed and, and built in 1972 is you've got a, you've got a robotics program that happens in there. You have 3D printing going on in there. There's a real dovetail between technology and creating things in that workspace. So that's really, you know, you have a project lead the way program and all of that really starts to become integrated with, with this adjacency between the computer lab and the, the workroom. So clean room, dirty room.
Band and choir. Big thing with these spaces, just sort of, some of it is functionality of the space. So there's risers in the rooms that are not used, they just kind of get in the way. So all spaces, we talked about removing those. That, that would go a long way with opening up the space and making it more functional. Practice rooms, so there's currently sort of a center bank of practice rooms and storage and office that either aren't really sized the, the best and aren't, I guess, the right size for the types of things they want to do. So we've talked about reorganizing that to some degree to give them better access to practice rooms, sort of better sized practice rooms. And also a big thing is, is instrument storage, which they don't have a great way to store instruments in the, in the music room. So giving them sort of dedicated and better storage within the rooms to, to be able to house all their instruments.
There, are they, is this the new drawing here?
That's the new.
Yeah.
That's the new.
That would, that's, yeah, it's a version of what it could be, so.
So we would still have a room for, for band uniforms, for storage of band uniforms?
Yeah, so we'd have better, you know, better location for practice rooms off of the corridor.
That, that was the prize. I was learning about that off the corridor.
Possibly a better arrangement of the offices, because right now it's just weird, sort of multi-door thing.
So right now you teach your strings program on the stage in the auditorium. So now they have access to some of those practice rooms right across the hall.
Okay. Question. Does that practice, does those two practice rooms make that choir room smaller?
They.
Or it's going in that first area where the piano, where that grand piano is.
Right now, when you walk into the space.
Yes.
There's sort of these two makeshift storage rooms right here. So those classrooms utilize that to take up a little bit more of that space.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're kind of pushing into the, into that room a little bit to make those rooms.
That's what I was wondering, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
We're cleaning it up, trying to, because right now it's a bit of a warren of that.
What, another question. Does this plan have anywhere for a music library?
Yes, it does. It's got storage, I mean, galore. We, we met with staff there and they, they need a lot of, of music storage, instrument storage.
So it has, okay, thank you.
And one other thing I just want to bring up at this point. These drawings that you're seeing right now and these images are based off of discussions that we had, meetings with, with teacher groups and administrators and it, these are for the purpose of estimating, coming up with budgets so that you as a board can come up with a, with a project that you would want to undertake. The actual design work would take quite some time and wouldn't really start until you had a, a positive vote. So the, the real design, you know, this is designed based off, you know, a couple of meetings. The real design would happen after the vote day.
Yeah, so the sort of scope that we're listing out on a lot of these slides is based on those. It's a general, it's giving us sort of that general starting off point. Giving us that ability to kind of say, okay, this is not much, it might cost to renovate these spaces. So the art rooms, we brought these into the scope, like I said before, as a way of moving, you know, as a way of making way for making the technology space more efficient and having those, that computer lab next to us, next to the wood metal shop. So then by moving these, we're able to renovate them, make them better. So just like any other space, we would do new ceilings, new lighting, give them ability to control lighting in the spaces. Maybe focus some lighting on some artwork on the walls. Give them better casework so that you can have deeper countertops to lay out artwork and work on more durable countertops so that they can use knives, cutting mats on the, on the countertops, not destroy surfaces. And give them just better, more functional tables and chairs for the students to sit at spaces. And with all these spaces, we talked about the technology room, computer room, talked about the science rooms. Everybody wants a, a better, more focused teaching wall than all these spaces. So, you know, giving them a smart board, more whiteboard space and just ability to have a focused wall for that type of, for that type of functionality. The, the science room. So this encompasses four science labs and also two, well, really three prep rooms slash storage rooms between the spaces. So these, these rooms, when we walk through, they're very, you know, a lot of them have the original casework in them, which to assessments, they, you know, held up over the years. It's, it's looking a little worse for wear, but it's, a lot of it's still there. So a big thing is, is when we replace those, to give back a more functional space, but also give them back casework and countertops that are, that are durable and, and long lasting, just like what, what we had. Another big thing is, is getting better lighting in the space or lighting control. Also, another thing they look like is the ability to have power. So maybe some, so pull down electrical cords and so that they have a little more flexibility in the space. And I think one of the rooms, there's a fumhood in the space. So the teacher would like to be able to replace that fumhood, but also be able to teach from it. So maybe it would be a dual-sided type thing located in a much better spot in the room so that when she does teach the students, that they can, there's a, there's a space for that. They're able to all gather around that. It's currently, it's a little difficult to do that and the equipment is too low. The, so entrance and entrance lobby. So these two, so this slide plus the next couple of slides, what we try to do is, is, is provide you a little bit of visualization of what these, these things could be. So like I said, the, the front entrance is 1972. So what we wanted to do was provide a canopy, I guess you could call it, to give the, to make that entrance more inviting, make it more contemporary and maybe give the school a little bit of a. to make that entrance more inviting, make it more contemporary and maybe give the school a little bit of a sort of a branding opportunity here. Uh so when you approach the building, you're sort of feel like you're approaching this uh uh a newer, almost a newer building. You were uh uh school almost. Uh so bringing in some, so maybe some uh metal panels and uh some color and signage onto that front. What you're also seeing in this image uh is, which I, which we'll get to in another slide, is this this concept of an entry plaza, which is an alternate scope item that we touched on earlier. So uh I think I'll explain that in the next slide, in another slide, but you're seeing uh sort of the the portion of that uh entry plaza as part of this uh. It's just another another vantage point of approaching the building through this new entrance. And then once you were, once you enter into the lobby, uh what we've, what we're, what this concept is trying to get across is we could, we can replace materials inside the lobby. The 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 general shape of the lobby is is still it the same shape, but we'd be replacing ceilings, giving it new lighting, uh putting in uh some new materials on the walls, moving a display case. The, when you come into the front entrance right now, if you look straight across and you see the the that wood and glass.
Main office.
Main office uh wall, we'd replace that with a modern glass storefront uh system. So just generally making it brighter and more contemporary. So the the next few slides are the alternate scope uh for the high school. So this this is showing you a a a plan of the library that we're in right now and the wall behind the the presentation board in front of us. We've talked with the librarian and one of the ideas that came out was possibly utilizing the courtyard uh and making it a uh opening up, making this wall so you could open up some glass doors so that there'd be a way to utilize that space, use it as part of the library. Could be reading space, it could also be a space for outdoor classroom, uh and I think also a space that uh seniors could use uh during lunch periods and such. So the, another alternate scope item is the entry plaza, which you could see a little bit in that first re- rendering. So what we've tried to depict here is a couple of things. The current, one one of the, I guess, one of the issues with the with approaching the school is the uh traffic pattern and the ability for somebody to enter the building without sort of crossing uh path of uh the parking lot and some of the traffic, some of the traffic. So what we try to do here is reorganize that and make that sidewalk area wider. So make it more of a plaza type approach and introduce trees, benches and make that so that as you, as you're approaching the building, you're you're in sort of this more, I guess, welcoming, larger area of hills here. Make it more pedestrian friendly. And in that, the bus loop uh would get just slightly rearranged so that the the gray area at the top of the screen would be uh taking, there's a, there's a large island there right now. We'd reduce the size of that island, tighten up the bus loop, push the uh handicap parking uh up toward that island a little bit. And then so that so that the bus loop is its sort of designated loop there. And then the uh parent and student drop off could then be its own loop.
Yeah. No, that, um, no, they, um, just us joining that conference.
So just while we're waiting for, well, here, here we are. This is our last slide of the high school.
Yeah, this this is a.
What's that?
Yes, this rendering is depicting that entry reorganization, reorganization of the bus loop in that entry plaza piece, giving you sort of a a little bit of a bird's eye view. So you're really kind of up in the air just from the parking lot side, looking toward the entrance of the high school. So you see that bus loop around the new island, the the move, the handicap spots moved over and then that that wider sidewalk area with trees, so softer, maybe uh stamped concrete type uh areas within that sidewalk and possibly some actions.
So for a quick overview on the high school, we really looked at taking care of things like roofing, you know, masonry repairs, real uh, you know, basic building upgrades that need to happen. And then also the thought with this building was really get some educational program into it and try to touch um, you know, music, art, technology, science, uh and the classrooms in that center quarter, really try to improve uh, you know, the educational process in this building. And then that front entry to really kind of give it some new life as a high school. And the thought was that everyone in the district, when they're going through all these buildings, end up at the high school. We thought it might be nice to have, uh, you know, a real uh uh feel, uh an upgraded, you know, really bringing it into the the twenty first century.
Onto the middle school.
So middle school is the 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 big scope component here. Uh, you know, trying to depict it with a couple of photos in that red bull line around the center portion of the of the building. So that center portion is the original uh piece uh that was built before all the other additions. There are uh precast lintels above all the windows in that center portion of the building that are starting to fail. There, you can see in the that one photo on the bottom, a lot of cracking and spalling of those pieces. And it's unfortunately, it's an important thing that has to get fixed on the building. Uh so it would require removing windows, removing those lintels, possibly some some brick around it, replacing them with new, putting everything back. So it's pretty, it's a pretty extensive amount of work, uh but a kind of a necessary thing that has to be done uh to that.
It's a health and safety issue.
Yeah, it's it's really an important fix that has to have, has to happen. We've had our structural engineer look at it and evaluate it and uh basically give us the the scope of work that has to be done. Um, an alternate item for this building would be a whole building backup generator. Uh the elementary school. So a couple of, uh, basically here, we're really looking at at more sort of necessary maintenance type things that have to be done to this building. And I guess one, another item, a couple of items of the alternate scope as well. So here, the red hatched area that you see on the floor plan in the in the corridor uh is replacement of that flooring. So what happened there was there, the flooring that's underneath the flooring that you currently have is uh has asbestos in it. And at one point, that flooring was, instead of removing it and abating it, it was encapsulated and covered over and in some, and since then, that floor, that the floor that's been covered, that we've covered over with uh has started to fail and crack. So it's it's at that point now where the flooring has to be removed, the flooring underneath has to be abated and all the floor put in its place. Um, another item with the bold red line around the building, it would be some uh stucco repairs around the exterior building. And then also some minor masonry work where there is some brick. And then uh that other area in the bottom corner would be some uh renovations to the gym. I think we've identified some flooring and maybe just some other cosmetic things, some paint and such in that space.
Can you take the pointer and uh on that back and point out where that flooring was going to be replaced? It's been encapsulated.
Right, right here where the um where the red stripes are.
Okay.
So it's really the entire um portion of the older building. This is the eighty eight wing.
Got you. Uh, where?
Main office being right here.
Main office is there and kids' club is over on the outside. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't know if I mentioned the alternate scope for here. So alternate scope would be uh gym wood floor and also adding air conditioning to the entire building.
Ear mouth to God's ears.
Uh, just see, get a quick visual on the building itself. So just large areas of uh stucco on the building where there's cracking and probably some spalling as well. Then you can see in that bottom right photo, that's sort of a zoomed in shot of what the the general condition of the of the flooring is in that quarter that has to be replaced. So a lot of cracking there.
I was just, my question, I was just wondering, trying to think about what, we use that building so much in the summertime. I was just wondering, you know, if we'd be able to use it when work or thing done. I'm I'm just thinking ahead, that's all.
Use it while work is being done?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, there there'd be, during the flooring abatement and such, you wouldn't be able to use that corridor. But it it's not work that would take, you know, more than probably a couple of months during the summer, probably a little bit less than that, so. Um, the bus garage, we didn't forget about the bus garage. Uh, so items here, no alternate scope at the bus garage, all this would be base scope. So we we're talking about replacing the balance of the metal siding on the outside of the building. We did, we did replace a good chunk of it in the last project, but there is some more left to do. So we'd we'd go around the rest of the building with that. And then on the interior, there's offices and also bathroom space that is in long. It's it's in need of 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 uh renovation. It's been a long time coming to save for those spaces. So here, we've got some site scope items that are also uh in here that you could sort of pin to a particular building, but I just I just got to separate them out as sort of, or I guess more district wide or just more site specific type work. So we've identified at the high school, uh milling and and topping the front parking lot. The, we've got some sidewalk repairs at the high school and M A D. Uh, some chain link fencing between the two buildings, between high school and M A D. And also there's, we've identified in that bottom left photo, there's a, the rear wall of the gym of the high school has maybe a potential branding uh uh space, put some school logos, things like that, because that's facing the fields, so it'd be a nice, nice big wall to do something nice there. Uh, and an alternate scope could also be uh a new sort of outdoor classroom pavilion at the middle school. Haven't identified, haven't given you an image of what that is, but we've talked about some type of, some type of pavilion that is complimentary to the middle school itself and in that space sort of near the front of the building, just at that corner of the building, adjacent to the fields.
Uh oh. Budget.
And everybody's favorite part, budget. Um so what we've done here is we've just broken it down by building. So we've got the high school right now uh at, so there's three columns. The first column is is just the, is if we took all the in-project scope that we've talked about, plus all the alternate scope and put it all into one lump sum, that's your first column. Second column is obviously the in-project scope, the last is is the alternates. So uh right now, all in scope, in-project plus alternates for the high school, we're at about thirteen point eight. Middle school is at three point one, the M A D four point eight, bus garage two, a little over two eight, two hundred eighty seven thousand. And then some of those site work items, a little over two million dollars. Uh, so right now we've got an in, uh about seventeen point eight million dollars uh of in-project work. And then the alternates are at about six point six point dollars worth.
And to give you some perspective on that, in terms of financing, we're going to turn it over briefly to uh Mr. Truddy.
So similar to the uh last project I met with Noah Nadelson from Unistat, he's our fiscal advisor. We kind of went through different scenarios and different costs. So if we look at the in-project total capital project cost that we were discussing today at seventeen point eight four six million dollars. Currently, we have two capital reserves. We have one that we built up and we used some for the last project that was five million dollars. We have three point, uh roughly three point four million left in that. And then we discussed in our financial reserve plan, going out with uh in May, another vote, because we knew work was coming up. And we did a five million dollar capital reserve and we're fortunate enough to put three point four in that. So right now we have six point eight eight three million dollars capital reserves. We would utilize all those reserves to offset any tax impact on this project. So if you look to the third line, net borrowing would be ten point nine six million. Average debt service at the current rates right now, uh we estimate at three point five percent. We'd be paying over fifteen years, nine hundred fifty one thousand five thirty. State aid, also we'd get state aid on that seventeen point eight four six, we have forty nine point six, so roughly half of that we get back in aid. So a little, you know, uh half of that seventeen point eight, uh we would get back, the principal and interest, they calculate. So the average state aid, six seventy seven, six ten. So the local cost to the taxpayer each year would be two hundred and seventy three thousand nine twenty. So what does that mean in uh someone's local tax impact? And this is yearly, so this isn't monthly, but the cost they would increase per year. On a hundred thousand dollar house, we kind of show it this way, uh right now I show, you know, we had reassessments, reassessments in values of homes have gone up. So for a one hundred thousand dollar house, thirteen point five three uh per year. If you had a two hundred thousand dollars, that'd be double to twenty seven dollars and five cents per year. And then three hundred thousand would be forty dollars and fifty eight cents. So at those current uh financial condition rates and borrowings and what you can get back on state aid, uh those are the numbers we're looking at. Now, when I spoke with Sal in the in the facilities group, and we're going to have a finance meeting coming up shortly next week, I was recommending, because we've been able to put some reserves away, and we're trying to build up our cap reserves and we're really focusing on a low tax impact project. Uh, we had reassessments and some people got hit significantly with the reassessments in the three towns. So on the next slide, I I, when I spoke, and obviously we'd run through the committees on this. If we decided to take some of our reserve money that we've been able to build and, you know, we have a pretty healthy financial reserve plan and reserves. If we took about one point six million out of those reserves and moved it to fill up the five million in capital reserves so we could fill that up to the uh the maximum, then we would utilize eight point four three four million. The borrowing would drop to nine point four million. The debt service, principal and interest on the debt on that borrowing would drop to eight hundred seventeen thousand. State aid would be the same, so we'd uh lower the cost to a hundred and thirty nine thousand four hundred ninety five dollars. Pretty much cut these rates in half. So a hundred thousand dollar house would pay six dollars and eighty nine cents per year. A two hundred thousand dollar house would pay thirteen seventy eight per year. And a three hundred thousand dollar house would pay twenty sixty six. So we'd be kind of using the reserves we built to try to, you know, we try to get to tax neutral projects and this would be getting close to a tax neutral project. Any questions on the costs or the financings?
So we've had a few unexpected expenses in the last couple of years. Uh, what will we have in reserves? I mean, how, how, how we guard against the need to?
Our reserves are, we're, we're gonna have meat on this, uh, probably.
In December, I'll go through our current financial reserve plan, uh, with, with the board, which we have last year's online. So the good thing is over, I've been here ten years, we've been able to build up our reserves to handle. I'm also looking at econec, economic impacts, you know, inflation, stock market coming down. So that's why I'm not saying, oh, take all the reserves and pay off this project. Uh, we still have very healthy reserves. So that'll take care of that.
So we, right now, uh, you can see here that what we'd like to do, uh, is try to finalize our, finalize our scope and budget. So finalize our conceptual design program budget by December fourteenth. And then that would set us up for, uh, requesting here the school's, uh, bond council to draft up some, draft up legal notice. Then by the December twenty-eighth, have the board approve the final conceptual design program and budget. And then, uh, at that point, we have a, a board resolution to establish the date for the votes, uh, the voter referendum. So that would give us from December twenty-eighth, at least that forty-five day notice to put us in a position for a February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three order referendum. Uh, and then before that, we assist the school in, uh, helping to put together a newsletter for the district to go out to, uh, to advertise the project, to get people out to vote. And then, uh, we've got there on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, public information meeting. So that'd be an opportunity to have, uh, a presentation of the, of the projects to the public, uh, to invite, uh, people to get educated on what the project is and encourage them to come out.
Um, uh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I, uh, you might want to just speak to, um, some decision criteria over this timeline in terms of, um, constructiv, or, um, construction timelines, meeting certain bidding, uh, favorable bidding times. I did, just so the board has a perspective on why we selected that February timeframe.
So in terms of, uh, voting periods for capital projects, some districts combine them with their May budget vote. Uh, and if you don't do that, the best time period for voting is really between November and February, because that pulls us away from other, you know, other tax issues, other, other issues that come up, uh, throughout the year. In, in terms of February fourteenth, if the board chooses to move forward with the project at that, uh, day, like I said before, the actual design of the project doesn't start until you have a project. So February, uh, the timeline would be designed. We would come in and meet with user groups, uh, in the schematic design phase, uh, early on, you know, that spring into early summer. And then, uh, really the rest is putting the project together. But it, it wouldn't go to state ed department. It would require S C D approval. And that would happen, um, really, uh, uh, the, you know, the end of the year, get into state ed with, uh, third party review. And they have either, you could either do a, uh, a standard review, which can take anywhere from, uh, eight months to a year and a half with S C D. Uh, or you can do a third party review where you would essentially S C D farms that out to, to companies like S E I. We are third party reviewers for other firms' work. We can't review our own. Uh, but, uh, that, that would put us in a situation to be bidding where approximately February of, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four. So projects would be bid in, uh, early spring of twenty twenty-four. And then we're really looking at, uh, two summer projects. So you're summer twenty twenty-four and you're, you're finishing up in twenty twenty-five. So it, it's kind of a, of, you know, it's a, it's a long-term process. And it, it helps us to hit, uh, the timelines. If, if we, if we, uh, go out to bid in the summer, for instance, you're more like a twenty twenty-six, uh, project. So it, we try to, have tried to compress, uh, the work into, uh, as much of a condensed timeframe as we can with this, uh, timetable here.
So I, just in terms of timeline, does this, i- if there's a complete failure of a referendum, um, where does that leave us for the normal, um, budget season? Do we have time to do an emergency capital project to cover some of the items that really like I, you know, it, it could be years before we get community, uh, some work together for another conversation if there's a failure.
There could be a couple of options. Um, I mean, you know, depending on the failure, if it's catastrophic, that's one strategy. But sometimes there's just an item or two that's a, is problematic. So you could, it's not uncommon for a school district to repackage something, taking into account the feedback from the community. And then, um, notwithstanding the comments that were just previously made, but you could look at probably repackaging that and bring it to, bringing it back to the community, potentially in the same timeframe as a regular budget or, um, uh, board of elections in May. It is all, it would all depend on, you know, the circumstances. In terms of doing an emergency capital project, um, there has to be a justification for that. You know, we've gone through some, uh, in terms of the, the transformer and, and, um, in the past, I'm trying to think of it. Yeah, it's gotta be a true emergency.
Yeah, maybe, maybe emergency was the wrong word, but from our perspective, there's some, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of programmatic impact here, which is we'd all love to see. We're in, we're in the business of educating. We need programs to do that. We've got parts of buildings that are failing. So, um, those are clearly critical.
Yeah. I mean, keep in mind that no matter what the scope is, whether it's five hundred thousand, a million or five, um, the timeframe in terms of design, going to state ed for approval, um, going out to bid, those timelines aren't going to necessarily change. Um, they're, they're, they're not insignificant. So, um, you know, I think that the reality is that, um, we probably want to think long and hard. And that's why this first initial blush at this to the board is we want to put our best proposal forward to the community that we think the community would support.
And if I can add to that, so what, that's one of the reasons why you see there's twenty-six million dollars worth of, of scope that was picked out by the facilities committee as being important work to look at. And then six point six million is, is a lot of alternates. But the, the committee really felt that they wanted to get down to something as close to a tax neutral project as you could get to in this climate. Uh, and then really it would be a matter of, of getting, convincing people that this is, this is important work to do and.
I think this is a good juncture to just, um, you know, mention, um, superintendents love to build new structures, right? And, and, and we all love shiny fancy things. But I think if you talk, uh, you know, remember we did a survey back in the spring. And I think if you talk to some of our, um, teachers, our administrators, um, some of our parents, certainly our students, um, there's concern over the aesthetic nature of the existing facilities. Um, there's a certain, um, feeling that we're not providing, um, the best atmosphere, the best school culture to live and learn in. Live being a, uh, you know, a loose expression for how much time that a lot of us spend here. So, um, a- again, I, I, I get that we've just gone through a really huge, um, time with a reassessment. Um, but I think if, and, and we'd have to do a lot of community, um, public relations, public communications, I should say, uh, to inform the community. But the reality is this building was built in nineteen seventies, effectively had no, um, tangible, um, you know, upgrades to it. Uh, I, I saw Jen Diorio just leave, but you know, Jen is one of the teachers who teaches in that area of the middle classrooms. In addition to those being a horrible educational environment to teach in, because you can hear, somebody runs a video in the next room, you can hear it. Anyone who was here for the senior capstone, uh, experienced that. As I've, you've commented in that regard. But also in a, in an era of increased safety, uh, if you looked at those rooms, there's four doors to many of those rooms. Tho- those teachers are concerned that they can't secure their area. We all know the statistics that Mike Needham always says, right now, um, of all the active assailants, no one has been, um, uh, killed behind a locked classroom door. And when we tell our teachers that, but yet they can't secure that middle section, that's of concern to them. So there, there's some, there's some other factors, uh, you know, aside from the aesthetic piece um, in regarding this project. At the end of the day, you are the board of education. And that's why this becomes a very difficult decision. You represent the community. Um, and we need your input to decide what makes the most sense in the community.
So can I ask, I don't know if you have any of the information. I don't know if you have any of the information, um, from the survey that was done, some of the comments, but, um, if you do, it might be helpful just to.
I, I, Chris, I, I hope to have some of the, a slide specifically related to that. And I simply, I just didn't get to it today, so my apologies. Um, and I can share as in the coming, in the coming days and weeks. Um, and I've shared the entire survey with you in the past. I can extract some of those and we would certainly incorporate some of that in our conversations with the community as well.
I, I think I just wanted to highlight, you know, the, the importance of, of the survey and it was such a useful tool in the committee, because we went line by line by line of, of items, you know, um, brought up in, in the survey. Buriel did a very extensive, um, study of it herself. We really, we really looked at it very carefully. And, and, and this project, you know, a lot of it was born out of, out of those comments that, that, you know, our, our district staff, uh, offered the insight. So I, I think it was a very useful tool and an important one, uh, that we're, that we want to respond to.
That's a great point, Chris. In there, things like, um, go ahead.
I want to be respectful of, uh, of the time we have from, uh, from our people from S E I. Maybe we can let them go when we, we're finishing questions. So if you guys have, uh, board members, you have questions for our design group here related to this proposal? And I, and I, and I do want to touch on that visit, um, A, because I didn't go and, and B, I'd like to get some feedback. Um, but I, I want to just get, before we get off subject, um, we've got sort of a diverse board here. Um, we've had some successful capital projects over the last couple of decades. We've had some failed capital projects. I, I think my feeling is that some of those failures had specific reasons behind them, that were not strictly fiscal. So I, I, I wanted to just like get sort of a gut read from our group here on if you have concerns, maybe even they're distant concerns, what are they? Cause I'd like to, I'd like to sample our audience right here. We, you, you guys are, are voters that just listen to this substantial proposal. Do we have any? Any feedback, concerns, questions? Go ahead. Do you have a mic? Hold on. Steal one of those, uh, yeah.
Okay. So when I was looking at the design earlier today, one of the things I thought of was those middle classrooms, the ones here. Um, as someone who takes a lot of classes in those classrooms, I see that it says they're going to be renovated. What necessarily does that mean? Because you can, like, if you're taking a test and there's a presentation happening in the other room, you hear.
All new walls.
Okay.
Yeah.
From the ground up.
Okay.
Those are those old demountable partitions. They're very thin. So, yeah, we would remove every single one of them between each one of those classrooms. Rebuild it with a brand new wall. Make sure that it's, uh, you know, better acoustically. So you don't get that sound transfer between the rooms, but also just like Sal said earlier, it'd be safer as well. So it'd be, uh, not only, you know, the other thing is there's a, a, a code requirement here also for fire safety as well. So we have, uh, built-in fireproofing between, with those walls, between the spaces that you could exit those rooms safely as well. So not only would you get better partitions, but better sound qual, sound improvement, uh, but you'd get that improved safety of the spaces as well. And there's also several doors that you can see in, in that plan. Multiple doors into some of the rooms. And what we could do is we could reduce that, uh, but still need building code for exiting. And I think that would also make those rooms a little safer as well. Uh, for, you know, in case there was an intruder or something to try to secure those rooms.
Was there some, there were some wiring deficiencies maybe in those walls too that I remember?
I think there's a lot of wire mold on the walls and things which could be rectified by, you know, when we.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Are there, i- is there anything objectionable here? Or things that seem more or less necessary? I'd like to hear some feedback on these items. Yeah, clear, clearly. Clearly I, I saw the, the, the condition survey and there was another half of the list. Yeah. There was another half of the list, which we haven't even really, maybe more than half the list, which we haven't really even surfaced here.
I, I think that if you're talking to the right people, I'm not going to be here. So it's hard for me to, you know, to look at. But I think that you are talking to the right people. Conversations are good. Conversations that are taking place.
And, and, and just to pause for a moment, because I think it's so important, um, we kind of touched upon it, but I see Patty and Sandy here, you know, we involved, um, we started with the teacher leaders and then they invited their colleagues from the departments. But, and I don't want to leave out anybody. We had science involved, art involved, technology involved. Um, the music department involved, um, some of the teachers from the center classrooms. Um, we, we really truly do want to, and that's just, as you heard, the preliminary design, right? Just to get some ki- kind of context. And then should we be successful in, um, passing a referendum, then we'd go back to those same individuals and ask for some more detailed involvement in terms of getting it to a design. There's probably a technical term for that, um.
User group meetings.
Yes. So.
So you asked, Vaddy, can, no- nothing stands out to me in terms of, um, alarming or, and I, I believe John's right, we're probably just scratching the surface, but um, if I had a concern, and I don't know, and, and I have to kind of weigh this out in my head, I guess, but the, the future economics of, of the nation and the globe are uncertain. This is going to happen right in the middle of that. So if I have a reservation, it's timing. But looking at, you know, some of the facing from the middle school, uh, the tile floors in the elementary school, a lot of the needs, as Gracey pointed out, for instruction in the middle or in the high school in the middle of the building, but like these, it, it's just a tough balance to act responsibly with taxpayers' money and, um, it, you know, in a growing potential recession. And also taking out a seventeen million dollar chunk. So.
Yeah, I mean, so go ahead, John. Uh, just as a reminder, uh, we had a failure related to, um, a large surveillance project, um, which I don't believe, uh, I, I wasn't on the board at the time. I don't believe it failed because of fiscal reasons, but certainly it was substantial. It was a capital, um, referendum. We had a failure related to, um, referendum. We had a failure related to, um, a, a building reconfiguration, and that's not what we're discussing here. There are some, some other failures, I'm sure in the history out, outside of my memory, but, um, Muriel, can you remember community opposition to, but, but what are the, like, what are the, what are the things people object to besides the dollars and cents, which, which is actually, I think, the easier thing to address from the perspective of we've, we've got strong fiscal management here, but that's not the whole story.
The capital project went down. It was just too, it was too much money. It was too much. We certainly didn't have figures where it's going to cost. The figures that Mike just gave us, they were much more than that. Um, the capital project was way, way too much for our taxpayers. This one, I don't, I'm not sure it is. I mean, I think this is much more fair and reasonable. And this, and this, and the security cameras went down. That's another whole story. It was just, um, a couple of people in our district that didn't think we should have them. It was to invade the, of children's privacy and they campaigned against it and have lost by.
So I, I'm looking at this one and it, it's not the core of the project that they were proposing, but it's, you know, the air conditioning in the, the elementary school, which I, I've been here for enough years to, um, hear over and over the programmatic need there. It's very clear to me. Um, but there's a lot of people that are going to say, well, why do we need air conditioning in the summer if school's not in session?
Well, I'm not sure about that because the, the, um, we sent out the, um.
Survey.
The survey. And the two top things in the survey we sent out, I read every single one. The two top things were air conditioning and the MED and auditorium seats in the high school. They were the two most things that were commented.
Those were parent comments?
That was all this, all the, you got the survey, we all got it, but the parents, the teachers, everybody. No, there were a lot of other things too. Science and, and IT and stuff like that. But the two high things, I got all the figures on, that was the.
It's.
I'm not sure. You know, we probably, we're talking about how to, uh, approach the MED, um, air conditioning, if we approach it at all. But I want you to know, I'm not sure that would fail.
I don't think it would either.
One, one of the things that Muriel's referring to for the benefit of the rest of the board is that one of the things we haven't discussed is, one of the things we did discuss was our, our approach to alternatives as, um, an option once all the bidding comes in, but you know, there, there are other things available to us as, as breaking down a couple of propositions. There's obviously not for tonight, but there's advantages and disadvantages doing that. One could argue that if we had, uh, incorporated the security project into the base last time, it may have passed because it only went down by fifty votes, but it could also take down your, your, you know, your, your, your core project, which we could not absolutely afford to have happened. Just, just for one, one context on the other reference sheet I gave you, if you look back in one of the defeated budgets, it was just kind of, um, interesting. In, uh, two thousand eight, the additional cost per hundred thousand dollars of assessment in nineteen or in tw- two thousand eight, so think about two thousand eight dollars, was sixty-eight dollars a year on a hundred thousand. We're talking about six dollars and eighty-nine cents in twenty twenty-two. That's a tenth of what was proposed back then in terms of tax impact. So.
I mean, it was still, it was still less than a percentage point hit, right? And from the perspective of a voter, a fraction of a percentage is often a fraction of a percentage. It's almost on, not material. And we were at that point in time, um, undergoing, um, a really strong economic, uh, climate. We were in a, we're in the middle of a, of a good bull run there. Um, and so what, there was no macro impact there during that vote, but it failed.
In two thousand eight?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand.
January, that was way before. No, no, it was way before Lehman. John?
Two thousand eight, was there one, was there, uh, a referendum project just a couple of years before that, five years before that?
Yeah.
So a big reason why the two thousand eight went down was the work that was done at the whole school, that very bad. And so there was probably a lack of trust.
Okay.
Well, there was a, I think. There was something, there was, there was a smaller project. Uh, I think it, it, a lot of work was, a lot of them were windows. And in the, in the, the years, they were already deteriorating. What did we do about that? I think it was a negative plus problem. I think the last break was so. So I just, that is a piece I think, if you're looking for reasons, history.
And yeah, that's important context.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Wasn't there one that went down because they were talking about closing the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a reconfiguration. Yeah.
But the one thing I walked away from our meeting at Ichabod was.
That was two thousand thirteen.
Getting out and selling it, selling it, selling it before. Invite people into the school. Let them see what we don't have here.
Take them on a tour of some of the other schools.
Yeah. Yeah.
I also, and I think that's a really good point, but I also think, and I'm going to disagree with you, Matt, I think a quarter of a percentage point is, there's a huge difference between sixty dollars and six, six dollars, the taxpayer. I think that the percent, if we speak in terms of percentages, I'd be anxious. I, I would, I'm telling you, I, I, I think at twenty dollars and sixty-six cents a year for three hundred thousand, I'm anxious about our taxpayers on that, but comparing that number to the actual number of sixty dollars a year for the hundred thousand on home, there's a huge difference in there. And I think that that difference needs to be articulated because that makes, that's a big, that's a game changer to me.
Well, we, once they see what we're trying to do, if they walk through those science rooms, they walk through this building and, um, and this is what I think we're planning to do.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a strong plan here. Um, I think, um, the solution that was presented was compelling to those of us that are very familiar with the problem. Um, I'm hearing from this group that there's a feeling that the community does feel the problem space and that they're not unaware that there's, that there's, um, addressable issues here, which is one of the things that could happen in a referendum is the community doesn't know that there's a problem that needs to be solved. Um, but I'm, I'm not hearing that right now. So that's good. I, I don't think I have more questions for SEI. I'd love to hear about that. That walkthrough, just, uh, can we keep it to five? We, we still have some other agenda items and I, I think we have an executive session on topic.
We've, um, we do have a couple of executive items, but the one major person we've, um, we've postponed.
So thank you for, for coming tonight.
Thank you guys. Nice to see you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So we had the opportunity to, um, some of the board members, uh, had the opportunity to walk through, uh, about Crane's facilities. Um, we spent about a, I don't know, hour and a half or so.
Yeah.
And, uh, it was wonderful. We, we, we got a chance to, uh, experience a lot of their, their new spaces recently done, uh, a lot of new instructional spaces. Um, some very inspiring, uh, spaces that were created, technology, robotics, um, a lot of reconfiguration. And, and I think, you know, uh, we all shared, um, a lot of, like, an impression of, of, uh, very, uh, light, airy, uh, bright colors. You know, the, the corridors felt, um, comfortable and bright.
Yeah. And the library.
And the library was amazing.
The library was, yeah.
So, so, you know, I, I, I think, you know, my takeaway on that was, um, there's a lot of room, a lot of opportunity that this school has to improve and, um, you know, this is going to take time. Um, and I think that the, from, from what I know of, of parents and the greater community is that there's a lot of pride in this school district. And we want to make sure that this building, this district, uh, reflects that pride. And I think, um, Ichabod has done a, a good job of, of expressing that, and I think we can too.
They could have had a, a, another building project just a few years before this big one went up. They did a huge music. I don't know what else they did. And, uh, and that, and then a couple of years later, they grew up the high school and it's really, it's really lovely.
Okay. So, uh, any other comments for now on, um, the capital project? We have a, our timeline between now and the beginning of that timeline, December, I mean, we, 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 um, what's our board action options between now and then? If we decide to move forward with that proposed timeline or, or.
Want to have, potentially have another meeting. So this community needs to get, um, we're waiting to take feedback from tonight. I, I assume you might want one more opportunity to have a chance to digest this and ask any questions. We could make final, um, changes to the proposal and then you will need to vote, uh, on December fourteenth, um, to move forward with the project.
So I, I, um, we talked about this in agenda a little bit, um, the options for packaging this proposal. Um, one referendum, maybe two referendum items. Um, before this presentation, I wasn't so sure of that idea of two. I'm. I, you have any, any?
No, I just wanted, I misspoke. You, you could probably go to the second meeting in December in terms of approving the budget and design, right, Mike? Cause that would still be the forty-five days. Yeah. So you could, uh, Deb, we have one on December, we have a second, we have one meeting or two meetings in December?
Fourteenth on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, I don't, do we, do we have a meeting on the twenty eighth?
Oh, the twenty, oh, I know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're probably, yeah, I think we're probably going to need, um.
Yeah, there's only one in December.
That's what I thought. I, I think our architects, but moved to the twenty eighth. I'm saying that's usually, uh, the break week. So we probably will need a, a, a quick, if, if you decide to move forward, we probably need like a quick five thirty meeting to approve, um, the budget and design, uh, because it'll have to take place before December twenty eighth to stay on the timeframe. You could, you could, yep.
Unless we don't make that, that date, and then we would need to do a number, uh, an, an extra session. So, um, in, in any case, when we were in an agenda, we discussed this briefly, this idea of a second, um, and it was hard for me to picture. I can sort of picture it now, right? That these, um, these alternate scope items, some of them might naturally fit into a second referendum item. I don't know if your, if your thoughts, you and Mike have, uh, continued that thought since then, um, but I'm, I think, you know, as a board level, I'd like to have a little bit of conversation on packaging because we, we all have to go sell our recommendation to the community.
So, so as I understand it.
I understand that the concern with a, a second vote would be, uh, well, a second item. Well, the, the question is, you know, how do we decide what's in the first versus the second? And, you know, if you, if, if something's in the second that, um, everyone loves, but, but enough of the community voted down because of something else that's in the second item. It's just, it, it seems, seems complicated to do, to, to, to add, but. If, 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 if we, um, if we include an item in a second referent, from a budgetary perspective, in a second referendum item, um, and there's extra funds in the primary scope, can we, can we use those funds as part of that approved spend?
Let me make sure. So the reason why we, I want to make sure I understand that. The reason we put alternative items in the base package is for that very reason. Um, based on bidding climate, time of year, when you authorize the, the total project amount, that can't change. So if you, just keep numbers, if you authorize a ten million dollar project and you do not have bidding alternates and you, your in-project items come to eight million dollars, you're done. You can't go out and, um, right? We had alternates though, but if you have the alternates there, then the board, the facilities committee would generally recommend, let's say you had two million dollars worth of spend there, the, and you had three million dollars worth of alternates, the facilities committee would look at the alternates and say, we could afford to do almost what we did with the shed. Right? To do that. Now, I want to make sure, what you're asking is if we had a second proposition, right? If that's what you're asking, that proposition would have to be passed by the voters. It's contingent upon the first one passing. It's always the first one to pass to get to the second. And then I guess, um, we'd have to, I'd have to think that through, Mike, in terms of alternates to a second proposal.
But, but the, but the, the approval is based on the dollar amount or is based on the items in the scope?
You're approving.
Just the dollar amounts. So that, that, it doesn't preclude.
You can't, you, we cannot use what, what we're not, no.
Well, it see, it seems almost unrealistic to expect that we're going to cover a substantial portion in this climate. That we're going to cover a substantial, I haven't looked at the budgetary numbers, a substantial portion of those alternates in this, this primary item.
We may not, we may not. I mean.
But if, if we want to pitch them to the community, then we should, and the community should decide whether we, we invest there.
We pitched to the community, our, our bond, our, the, the bondage of the things, the, the main things, the, the science rooms, the roof and things like that. Um, I guess probably, I don't know if we mentioned the alternates or not. I can't remember.
Oh, absolutely. They need, when they approve the budget amount, they are approving the go, the scope and the alternative. Yeah. They need to know what you're buying.
But we not, we may not be, we may not be able to do one of those alternates if the bids come in.
So, so there, there, right now, the design team, uh, is carrying a substantial, uh, contingency. It includes a twenty percent contingency plus soft costs, uh, which is, I believe, a twenty-two percent. So that's a forty-two percent number, um, which that, of that is a twenty percent contingency. That twenty percent contingency is there for a reason, um, because we don't know the climate and we have to hold it. But we do think that there's an opportunity to, to capture, to capture some of that, um, you know, to, to address some of these alternates. We just don't know what it is.
Yeah, the, the two, if I'm, the two big items would be the financing at the time of the bid, and you heard that from Ichabod. By the time they went to finance it, um, the, the environment was so favorable that they were able to do a large amount of extra, um, items because it was less expensive to finance. That was one. And, and the second, um, factor there is your, um, your materials cost, right? We, we, right now, I think they were at five or six percent escalation a year.
Right.
Cause everything's getting more expensive, you know? If things flatten out, um, things could go the opposite way too. So it's, I've seen projects with a dozen alternates all get funded and I've seen projects with a dozen alternates and not a single one gets funded. It's really kind of, um.
I mean, I, I think one of the questions in my mind is, you know, um, you know, our community is made up of many different stakeholders. But in terms of the parents, um, you know, early parents and, and, uh, MED or parents in middle school, or, or even maybe the parents in the high school, um, I suspect that they are going to be excited, uh, regarding the program components. Um, so you know, so some of these items that we have in, in the alternates relating to program, you know, I, I think they would love to, to see, you know, and, and included. So it's, I think we're going to have to, as a board, we're going to have to figure out what is that best package next. So like Matt said, it'd be nice to hear other board members' comments on it. We, so the committee can use these comments. What, what did we manage to recapture from our contingency last, last cycle?
He's, I'm sorry, I, it's funny. Make sure Brian knew that they're up pretty early. They could take, they can go. Say that one more time.
What, what did we recapture on the last project? Um, I think we, we, well, from a percentage perspective. And, and we could, but we, about three hundred left. So if we, if we, if we performed at the same level, then, um, we'd be looking at about a third of our alternates funded here. So my question is, just presuming that's the way it performs, is that the pitch we want to give to the community? Um, like, let's just presume. Um, like, let's just presume that two-thirds of those alternates are not going to get done. Is that the ask? Do we want a second ask? Do we want a bigger ask? Do we want that, this ask? Cause I, I, um, I think that there's a lot of, people are aware of these problems and we've, we've, we've.
Well, I, so, so for example, if, you know, if we just start off with the big number and say, well, look, we have a twenty, twenty-five million dollar big number here, starting there. That's something that we want to start off as an ask, that obviously changes the calculus a lot, you know, and and that would be a major increase. That would be, that would be a major increase. So I, I would suspect the answer to that is no. So then going down from there.
We really don't assume the energy of things.
No, I don't think, I don't think we know anything.
We don't assume that any of them.
Okay, so we, we've, I think, um, I, do you guys, I mean, as a board, I, do you guys feel like you're ready to make a recommendation? Do you want another meeting? Quick, clearly, the sooner we make a recommendation or not, the sooner lots of other things can happen.
I think that that, like Muriel said, and that is the person that I was wondering about. So let's look at the, I, I'm really interested in the ca, the impact to the taxpayer. If we added just.
No, no, I don't think so.
No, 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 just the auditorium seating.
Just the seating.
I, I can give you that.
I don't want to blow the budget out. I'm just wondering about what it would be like.
Two fifty, two fifty-four.
Uh, you know what? Do we have itemized, do we, can we get these al- alternatives itemized?
We, we can provide that to the board.
And then we will, it sounds like we need another meeting. I mean, we don't need it down to doors, right? Just the bullet points. And.
I can have that for you tomorrow.
Components of the scope presented that is unclear to any of the board members?
But we're, you know, we're looking at, um, financing, um, half of this project, right? So if we increase the spend, um, all of that's going to be borrowing, right? We don't have additional reserves to, to continue to.
Well, that's why I asked how much, like, specific, like, the auditorium seating is a big deal. I think to me, I think it's the auditorium seating, big deal in the survey, a big deal to me. So we're not looking to blow the budget out, like, does it, eh, eh, you said two thirty-five, what was that, two hundred thirty-five thousand?
Two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty-four, two hundred sixty thousand.
So I mean, it's nominal, probably, yeah.
Depending on, you, you know, depending on, um, the priority of the alternates, you could predict with somewhat certainty that something of that magnitude would probably be.
The, the thing in the alternates is we have this lump, which is the, um, the, the elementary school air conditioning. And it's really just deciding, you know, in this six-point-something-million-dollar alternate list, where, where is that three-million-dollar lump going to be? Is it the beginning, middle, or end? If we, if we did that, the way to do that would be with a new, that would be all bond borrowing.
Ju- just, I mean, don't hold us this, right? But like, if that's a three-million-dollar proposition, probably would be like, it would be like four dollars a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I think it's worth considering as a separate record.
Yeah, there's a lot to be said for that. Then you can say that the voters.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're, we're going to get some, some answers to some, uh, questions that sound like they're relatively easy because we already have the information, it just needs to be collected. Uh, we're going to meet again, um, and, and hopefully we'll be making a recommendation the night of, uh, December one. I'd, I would rather not have it drag out further into December and have to do a special meeting. Uh, so do we need scenarios? Or do you think?
We're really just talking three, right? And we're talking like, right, including the air conditioning in the budget with the seating in the budget.
As an alternate?
No, like the three, right? One is including it.
You mean what there is right now?
There's what, there's what there is right now.
Yes.
That's number one. Then there's what there is with the air conditioning and the auditorium seating. And then there's what there is with the auditorium seating, which is a below a million dollars and the, and a, and a referendum for the air conditioning. Those are really the three scenarios.
I haven't heard any others, you're right, but there's clearly a lot of ways you could cut this.
That's true.
Does anyone have anything to add? Because it, with, with that said, Mike can just go through his spreadsheet maze and have those available in draft form where we can recommend them at, we, we probably don't actually need the details of like, I don't know, how much detail do you need for us to make a recommendation on December one? Do we have to act, I don't want to have you model this like eight different ways and have it. Okay. Okay, sounds good. Um, so it's a long meeting. We are very close to the agenda portion, end of the agenda portion of the meeting and we're into to board comment here. Um, I, I'm personally commented out for the night, will you guys? Um, just as a reminder, we're going through comptroller audit, but that's not going to come up for another probably month, right? Maybe December one, maybe not. Um, anything, anyone else?
Let, let me just throw in my two cents because I taught for thirty-five years in the elementary school. The need for AC in the elementary is, it's so big, I ca, I can't even begin to talk. It, one year it was so bad, once we, because I was downstairs at that point and we had to close the door to the outside, which was really the ventilation for that room. I had parents bringing in huge fans, just so the, so, just so the classroom was below eighty-five degrees. You can't learn that way.
And you have to consider the safety concerns because right now everybody can't be having their doors propped open and I agree.
Yeah.
It really should be considered.
And, and the other piece that we didn't mention, because I sound like a used car salesman, is, um, I'm not as much in a fan to, uh, uh, referring to it as air conditioning as environmental controls. Just like we did with this project here, we get filtration, we just got, we just finished up COVID and we've been talking about air quality. Uh, we're, right now, our teachers have to open up, uh, windows with screens and, and doors. And so there's safety, there's, there's, um, climate, but there's also air quality. Now, in fairness to our colleagues at the middle school, because I think the biggest question is, hey, how about us, right? I'll go on record as saying, because of the complexity of that building, the cost to do air conditioning in a similar manner is probably prohibitive.
Well, or something that would have to be considered down the road.
Yeah. Certainly not outside of the realm of being considered, but not certainly. Yes, and we do try to provide conditioning in places where it's, you know, third floor, south-facing, middle school rooms have air because they are intolerable. But so we do, we do try to, um, have a more of a localized approach to that. But I just, I, I, that may come up in conversation with people that you know that have middle school students. And it's, as you can imagine, with the, the, the way that building is seg- segmented, um, ductwork, those kinds of things are just incredibly more challenging. Not, as Chris is an architect, we try to say, nothing's impossible when you have all the money to work with, but that, that one's a challenge.
Um, I just wanted to comment on the, uh, the, the mental, uh, the, the presentation tonight on, um, the, yeah, I, I thought that was, uh, extremely, um, useful and I would like to see, you know, that could be incorporated into, you know, a yearly presentation. I think it'd be very helpful for us as a board.
Absolutely. Um, we, we should note that we added, um, because of the board's desire to make sure that we provided the adequate cert, uh, uh, quality of services to our students, we did add a fourth, um, school psychologist, um, that was about two years ago, Mike. Yeah, so we, um, and, and they're not easy to find.
Yeah, and I, it, it's, it's worth noting that we might, we might need more of those services in the high school, but with the current hiring climate, I can't imagine that after now.
We, we were fortunate with that extra, not to keep us till midnight, but, um, remember, we, we had a, uh, one of our school psychologists at the high school went on maternity leave and we were unsuccessful in filling that vacancy. So we had to spread out the existing school psychologist to cover it. And thankfully, she's, she's starting back one day a week tomorrow and within, by, um, Thanksgiving week, she'll be back, so.
Great.
Um, we, we've tied, that, that was through, um, Brian's leadership.
Okay, so we're, we're into the student representative report. Yeah.
You could stay right here tonight.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we discussed officer introduction for student government. Those will be happening at the November fifteenth meeting. I have talked about, I believe, all of them should be able to attend. Um, I know I mentioned as well that we were rewriting that proposal for senior privileges lead during lunch. I met with the student government president the other day and we did rewrite that proposal. We are waiting to go over that with the other student government officers and then we'll meet with Thorson before we present to the board. And I was asked earlier this year for sports updates, the teams, girls soccer was for true champions. Um, but they ended up finishing their season, uh, they lost their game to the second seed Stillwater in the second round of sectionals. Boys soccer finished their regular season over five hundred for the first time in a couple of years and then ended up losing at home during overtime in sectionals quarterfinals. Football has another week until playoffs, they are at home this Friday, um, and then the playoff week starts the week of November fourth. Volleyball has just finished the regular season, they are the fourteenth seed and are playing the third seed Stillwater tomorrow away. Um, cross-country how to meet today, I think their season's going fairly well. Girls tennis had a very competitive season with multiple girls advancing through several rounds of individual sectionals. And then golf also had a couple of students that ended up advancing through a couple of rounds of individual sectionals. Our swing musical has been announced, we are doing Mamma Mia, I am very excited about that. And then Shakespeare, their performances are going to be the eleventh and twelfth, um, of November, so that's coming up as well. Um, and then Triumph has their introduction tomorrow night, a lot of our clubs are up and running. Roblox has their first tournament, I believe, next Saturday. So we have a lot of student involvement, a lot of clubs, I know. We've had a meeting for a different club almost every day after school on the announcements. So it seems like we have a lot of student involvement here, which I'm really excited to see.
Seven thirty tomorrow night.
Seven thirty tomorrow, Triumph, okay. I was like, I have no clue what you're referring to. And I was like, three things happening tomorrow. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, we don't have any questions or comments, we're all like SCI, SELled out. Anyone have any questions before we move on towards the end of this agenda?
So, early up is due tomorrow.
Okay. So we're gonna, gonna move on into the superintendent's report, um, Sal, your last.
I have a quite lengthy report for you to, um, I, I, I really don't have anything, um, of importance that can't wait, but what I do want to do is just give, uh, Dr. Rude, um, a couple of brief moments, uh, in anticipation of some future presentations, so I'm going to put a, a couple of slides on the screen, she's going to take the microphone and, um, she's going to talk fast.
Okay, so, um, we will be presenting at the end of November on, with an academic update. And, um, much like we've had two very intense presentations today, uh, I wanted to check in with the board to give you a, a direction for what we intended to present. And if, and to get a little bit of feedback, um, and to see if there were any, uh, high-level things that, that we've missed um, or that we could consider presenting at a later point in time. So, um, what's, this will be a similar format to last year. Um, but I did want to start off with just talking a little bit about data and use and data types, um, and how we're using, um, formative and summative feedback. Um, because when you look just at summative feedback, which is like three through rate assessments and region scores, right? That is a part of what we do, um, and does not tell the whole story. So I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview on that and also, um, some different perspectives of how we each, um, based on our role, um, use that data and look at that data because like how you view the data is different from how teachers do and et cetera, right? So that will be a pretty brief, um, in, introduction. Um, and then for both the, uh, for all of MED, the middle school, high school, the basic format was, um, you know, what, you know, what's, I think I ma, I must have missed a slot there, missed a box. Um, you know, what's, um, what assessments do we have, what are missing? Where are we at? What are our strengths? What are our opportunities for growth? Um, and then what action we're taking, um, from that data. So we do want to give a comprehensive overview of, um, where we started last year, where we ended, what our growth was for the year and also what our strategies are moving into next year. Um, it's a, it's a lot to cover and I, and we are going to give you the full spectrum going from MED to the high school. So you can get a comprehensive view. Um, but I, before this presentation gets fully, it's like kind of half together right now, um, I wanted to get your feedback of what's, what's important to you, um, so that we can adapt as necessary before the presentation.
I think it would be helpful, I mean, I think those questions are great, I would love to see all of that. And then context, you know, I, I keep, you know, in my head, I keep going back to context of, you know, where were we in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and where are we? And I don't know if that's possible, but.
Well, it.
Or maybe it's not relevant.
Yes, but I'll be, I, I think I would have to talk briefly about, you know, we are missing big chunks of data from the past two years. So, um, we can have some comparisons, but I'm going to get, during that presentation, I'll give some caution.
Sure.
And we'll have some regional comparisons too, um, from, you know, from last year. So you can, you can get a sense of, of where we're at compared to local districts.
No, no. Go ahead.
One thing I'd like is, um, an update on how things are going with the new reading program at MED.
Okay, I, yes, um, on the literacy program? All right, I think that, uh, you know, I can talk to Sal about this, I'd love to give a, an update on literacy that I think deserves some time. And maybe we do that as a separate presentation, I can give a couple of highlights during this one, okay?
I just would like to know it because I know everybody was so excited going into it this year. I'd like to know how it's.
There's good, there's good stuff happening.
Yeah.
One of the other things that we discussed briefly, which I'm not trying to sign Lisa up for extra reporting work was, but maybe breaking, because everyone is anxious, soon as we got the last snapshot and then there's another state test, everyone on the board is asking about the results and it takes a long time, but, um, this is like sort of the winter update and maybe there should be a spring update, uh, to balance out, you know, these points during the year when we have new data. But maybe, I would hope that it's less reporting at each one instead of twice as much reporting. I don't.
Yep.
I don't want to catch up, but I was kind of going to, it's, uh, thinking about Chris's comment on the SEL presentation and really hearing that data and that concern. I wonder if there's not a correlated, like, can we look at a correlative, correlative data set?
So in other words. Student A or eighth grade, you know, from seventh grade, from sixth grade through COVID. You know, how are they performing? Same thing with other classes, and maybe it's a combined effort between you and Brian to identify the kids that they are seeing the most of at tier two and tier three. And looking at their individualized trends. I know you can't share individualized student information. But if we could categorize that in some fashion. Uh, to see, can we get a read on whether or not the mental health of students is is impacting their academics?
I think, and I used to, so. My response to that is I I think that that's a great use of some of our inquiry teams that that we start in the buildings. I think we could give a couple of vignettes of starting that work, but I think to give a comprehensive view of what you're suggesting. Uh, might be hard to do for the end of November.
Yeah, no, and I I agree. And I'm wondering if not, if it's not gonna be a side project we could take on and and build it out over, you know, let's see something in the spring. Let's see something in the fall. Let's see something in the spring and see where we are two or three years from now.
Okay.
All right, I don't see any other comments. Lisa, I see you got a couple of other share items here. We're gonna go over, I I'm just looking at these other two slides.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Yeah, this is just an update on if there, I don't know if there's any more data questions or requests of your brain is is done. I just wanted to quickly. Update you that Kate and I, the last board meeting I was attending virtually from Chicago. That was paid for by the American Institute of Research for Kate and I to go to Chicago. And we are part of a research practice partnership with them. So in the the deck that is, or just a couple of slides that I provided. The air RPP is hyperlink so that you can get a sense of what their work is and what they do. But they're basically, this study is involved with looking at the effects of the pandemic and how how we emerge. And specifically how we focus on equity of some of our students whose voices are not readily heard. So I link to some of the American Institutes for Research work, and then if you can go to the next slide, Sal. There's I have a hyperlink to the New York Kids blog. They're from the University of Albany. So you can see some of our work highlighted there. Basically, this this is all of us at the end of the session. We have a couple of coaches from Tammy, who's virtual on the screen behind. And Beth, who is in the orange in the front, they're two coaches that are assigned to us from the Albany, or I'm sorry, the American Institutes for Research. And we also have. Some, a professor and a research assistant from the University of Albany. And the other people besides Kate that you see on that side is Tech Valley. So we are, we are working on a shared problem of practice with Tech Valley. And this is. I I just, we wanted to highlight that this is some of the work that is happening, I think. But we felt very fortunate and humbled to present and to on behalf of of Chatham. The other, there were three other presentations that were there. One was Miami-Dade County from Florida. Another was called the Blessed Collective in New York City. So we we represented in some just fantastic and a fantastic forum. So. Just want to let you know sort of a little bit of what we're up to.
Great.
That's what we have.
Sal, you kept your your portion short tonight. With that, I think we're into consensus agenda. So R twenty three, be it resolved, the Board of Education accepted consensus consensus agenda I through K as written. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments on consensus agenda? I don't know if anyone's looked through it. Pretty, there was nothing exceptional in this. Dispatch. Uh, I I think we have an extra page actually on the comprehensive revenue status report, right? Right, Mike? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're into items for future agenda. I know we talked about a few of them tonight. Any anything else new? Okay. We are into second public comment. Do we still have any? Do you still have any public comment? Okay, we've got, we've got one. If if any, do we still have anyone online? If anyone online would like to get in line, there's a digital hand at the bottom of the screen. You could be up next.
Alrighty, Sandy Fisher, in case you don't know who I am. Powder puff football game is next Tuesday at six thirty out on the football field. The girls each have a team, nine through twelve. The senior parents are providing hot foods and drinks and desserts. I think we've got a a student. Um, and we've got a student singing the National Anthem, so it'll be a really fun community event. So. If you're hanging around in Chatham on Tuesday at six thirty.
Do we still have the board retreat that night?
Yes.
Oh, bummer. Well, rain date Thursday, so if it's raining, then it'll be on Thursday. The senior team working with English twelve has been organizing the mock interview event, and I actually spoke to that at the last meeting. I just wanted to give you a quick update that we've got over thirty people from the community that are participating and everyone has. Wanted to do both the interviews and the panel. So it's been hugely received. We've got a few loose ends to tie up, but we're really looking forward to that event and think it's going to be a really cool. Thing for both the kids and for the community to participate in that way. And then lastly, the class of twenty twenty three. Has adopted, and they don't, they don't all know it yet. I spoke with a small group first. We've adopted a person at the Gent Assisted. Living facility for Christmas and will be providing them with Christmas gifts. And so it was, it's important for the class to feel of service and to give back to the community. Uh, and this opportunity came up, so I I reached out and and we have at least one person and I said if they needed additional help to let us know.
Okay, it looks like we have one digital hand and thank you. We have, we have one digital hand online. Just as a reminder, this is a moment to take a few minutes to speak about any issue pertaining to the Chatham Central School District. If you could state your name. Um, and then we'll give you a few minutes.
Promoting you to. If you unmute your mic, you're ready to go.
Do we have a, I don't see anything up there.
All right, they're not, they have both their video and their audio muted, and maybe they put their hand up by mistake, although it came up during the. Yeah. So, oh, there we go. Yep. Go ahead. Just unmute your microphone. You should be good to go.
It's like maybe we're fighting conferencing challenge difficulties. Is there a dial in number?
There is, but I don't have it. It's not something I have.
We we could always, I don't know if the individual can hear me, but.
They should be able to.
We we could always, if you want to put, and and I thank you for sticking it out here for a few hours. But we can always read a statement aloud at the next meeting if you want us to read it in, publish record. Chat's difficult, but. But but if she, he or she wrote a a letter, we could read it in next meeting. Or we can wait a moment.
I'm sending a message to chat. It's showing that their microphone and video are muted, but their hand is back up, so. I don't know if they're having technical difficulties. Oh, sorry, I'm not, it's not letting me in for some reason.
Maybe a browser issue there. I would, I would go so far as to say we could make space at the next meeting if we needed to for someone at the beginning.
If you would like to real quickly disconnect and reconnect, that may help. Let me try something. Let me. Take you back out from being a panelist. Oh, they must have, okay, they're gonna try again.
Please have a name we can reach out and.
We have initials and they are being promoted again. Let's see if that works. Nope, not working. Okay, so you're gonna message us later. Absolutely. Please reach out. To the superintendent's office. I'd be happy to assist you in any way we can. My apologies for the technology now cooperating tonight.
Okay. Tuesday special meeting at five. Yes. Yes. I don't remember.
Dinner is at five, giving us a half hour to kind of eat and then Mike is joining us for dinner. He's confirmed that and we'll start about five thirty. And we'll go to eleven thirty. I wanted to see if you guys were paying attention.
I I I don't recall. It's it's gonna be board members and district administration.
Just who's here today.
Okay, yeah. All right, so with that, we're gonna move on. We. Do have some items. Uh, pertaining to specific individual that needs to be covered inside a executive session and. It's specific student and specific staff, which which category is this?
Student would be one and. And potential litigation, I think we've listed it as a proposed pending or current litigation.
Okay. Proposed pending or current litigation pertaining to the student. So. Be it resolved at the Board of Education, enter executive session. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you so much for staying. Can I have a motion to appoint Salvador D'Angelo as district clerk pro temp? All in favor? And we do not anticipate returning to open session.